And justice for all.
Okay, we're going to begin with, I believe, Mr. Canelia, you have a couple short witnesses to start with tonight, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, are they already sworn in?
Yes, actually, the first witness is John Clouver, he's already been sworn in. Or, your mic is off. Yeah, the first witness is John Clouver, he's been sworn in, you've heard last time, he's an architect, and I believe his CD is listed as A-10. And John, you're still on your oath here?
Yes.
And you're one of the architects on the project, correct?
Yes.
Now, the CICD ordinance requires the applicant, if they're going to provide rooftop mechanicals, to get approval during the conditional use process by the Board of Commissioners. Is Villanova proposing any rooftop mechanicals?
Yes.
Can you explain to the Board, using the various exhibits, what is being proposed?
Yes, so if we look at this exhibit here, which is A-23A, it's a site plan showing roof, a roof plan of the CICD with various rooftop mechanical equipment shown in red.
Can we just, let's just hold off one minute before you. Now, has that exhibit been?
It's been handed up, it was handed up last time?
Right, I have a packet of exhibits, starting with A-19, and Mr. Canelia, I'm assuming?
A-19, A-20, and A-22 will be touched on by Alex Tweedie, the engineer, who will be the next witness. A-21 is the acoustic report, and remember, on the acoustic report, he could not make this evening, so we're going to do him the next hearing.
Okay, but what you gave me last hearing was A-19, I think through?
A-26?
A-25. I think A-26, we actually marked it.
Right.
That one's in, but this is A-19 through A-25.
Correct.
I'm going to just get the Commissioners copies of all of these, so that as your witnesses testify, they have these exhibits. Each of these packets is for it. Okay, so let's start with the exhibit that you just, what number is it?
A-23A.
A-23A, okay. And A-23A is a plan showing screen rooftop mechanical equipment, plan locations, it's got a date of September 30th, 2014.
And John, I would ask, as you're referring to the exhibits, if you would refer to them by the exhibit number, and just as Mr. Rice did, what they, what the title of it is?
Okay.
And I'm also going to make a copy for any of the residents available that want these, that we'll be talking about tonight.
So shall I proceed now?
Yes.
Okay.
Please, thanks.
So, on the rooftop of the Performing Arts Center, we have three air handling units located on a flat roof and screened by a rooftop element. We'll show some sections of various locations later. The building 2C at the corner of Lancaster and Ithyn has a flat roof section, which has several cooling towers, generators, and condensing units in this location at the corner of Lancaster and Ithyn. Further south, there are some condensing units. Over at building 2A, there are two locations with equipment. At the northwest corner, we have a generator and a condensing unit, several condensing units. At the southwest corner, we have several condensing units. At building 1C, we have a generator and several condensing units. At building 1A, we have, at the southern edge, several condensing units, and at the northern end, a generator and several condensing units. All of this equipment is hidden by the roof and parapet elements that are part of the architecture of the, of the building.
And actually, that exhibit there, John, was that A-23A or A-23?
That was A-23A.
Okay.
So.
If I may, I think it's A, oh, that exhibit there is A-23A.
Yeah, right. I have it marked as A-23, John, that's why I was asking that, too.
Well, we have, A-23 has an A through G, so, right? A-23, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, is the way I?
My apologies, my online copy has a slight numerical discrepancy to the hard copy, it turns out.
All right, here's what I have, I have A-23, and then the next page is A-23A.
A, right, okay. But it's eight pages.
So everything that I previously said was A-23A is actually just A-23?
Right.
Okay, my apologies. So, now looking at A-23A, this is an elevation along Lancaster Avenue, showing the full extent of the housing. The elements are small, show the entire width, but zooming in, you can see in elevation the locations of the mechanical equipment at those various buildings. And you'll see, as we get closer, that the equipment is at or below the height of the various roof and parapet elements. Looking at A-23B, this is the elevation along Ithyn Avenue. And A-23C shows that same elevation with the location of the cooling towers, in this case, shown in red, shown on an elevated donage for maintenance purposes, and the profile of the roof and parapets is shown in red also.
So that previous exhibit, though, shows actually what it would appear?
Yes, the previous A-23C shows what that elevation would look like from the street. A-23D shows the condition as a section cut and sort of imposed on that elevation to help understand the relationship. So the top of that mechanical equipment will be at or below the height of the parapet and other roof elements. Similarly, A-23D shows a portion of the elevation along Lancaster Avenue, this is the corner closest to Ithyn. And A-23E shows that same elevation, again, with the mechanical equipment superimposed, showing the relative heights compared to the elevation and the parapets. A-23F shows a portion, another portion of the elevation along Lancaster Avenue. I believe this is at the building 1C location. And then A-23G shows that same elevation, again, with the mechanical equipment shown in red. So this is all typical of the, of the development and how the mechanical equipment will be screened from, from all angles.
Will sound attenuation devices also be installed?
Yes, they will.
And in what manner?
Some of the equipment will have sound attenuation built into it. Whether or not it has that equipment built into it, we will also be providing sound absorptive surfaces on the walls that surround the equipment within these, we'll call them mechanical pits, for lack of a better term. So the idea is that sound is absorbed at the source, and any sound that comes out is reflected up.
Will they be screened from view?
Yes, they will.
And will they be integrated into the overall design and architectural character of the building?
Yes, they will.
Will they be hidden or disguised from view from adjacent streets or property?
Yes, they will.
Now, going on, you were also, I believe, requested to produce elevations at the Performing Arts Center and the parking structure, have you been able to do that?
Yes.
And I believe A-24?
A-24, yes.
You can start with A-24.
So, exhibit A-24 is the garage elevation along the Pike Field or East Side. This elevation is an update from one that was shown previously. It shows a more, an elevation with more solid to opening ratio to it, so that you see a center section here, which is done in masonry, parapet walls and spandrel panels that are done in solid material, and then you see some openings at each parking level here to provide the required open area for ventilation purposes. The, similarly, the next exhibit, A-24A, is a rendering of the view across Pike Field, looking west towards the parking garage on the left, and the Performing Arts Center on the right. This is showing the relationship between those buildings and the landscape in the area. You'll see there's a row of loosely spaced trees, shown in a mature condition along both of those buildings. The intent is not so much to screen them as to create an architectural relationship between landscape and building. I think that's all I have to say about those.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Bowler, cross.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Clouver, how are you again?
Good evening.
Would there be less noise impact if the mechanicals were placed on the ground to the neighbors?
I believe that the acoustical impact of mechanical equipment on the ground and on the roof would be equivalent, based on the screening mechanisms that we are providing.
Okay, and you indicated that as a result of sound attenuation within the equipment itself, is that right?
Some of the equipment has enclosures that go around it to absorb the sound.
Okay.
You don't have to look at him, if you stay with your mic, we can hear better, yeah.
And you indicated that you may place absorptive surfaces, is that, was that the word?
Sound absorptive surface, yes.
Okay, what kinds of sound absorptive surfaces are you talking about there?
It could be something like, like a lightweight block that has some open area to it that allows sound to absorb in before being reflected out, or get the sound diffused. We'll be working with our acoustician, who will be testifying later, on what the appropriate materials are for those locations, and he might be a more appropriate person to ask.
Okay, but it is your opinion that the sound that is produced by these mechanicals, this mechanical equipment, will be absorbed at the source, and any sound will reflect up? Am I correct?
Not all, not all sound will be absorbed at the source, there will be some level of absorption. The sound that, that leaves from the area, though, is reflected up. There will be some outward motion from it. The way sound waves travel, again, the acoustician could explain this much better than I could, but the intent is that the sound is controlled at the source to a, to a level that by the time it reaches property lines and other bordering areas, that it's at a level that is consistent with the ambient noise levels.
Okay, and then just a few questions about the equipment itself. You indicated that there would be cooling towers, what's a cooling tower, what's that do?
Cooling tower is a, is a piece of equipment that takes a circulation of water from a chiller located in the basement of the units, sends cooled water down to the, down to the chiller to be distributed through the building, and the warm, it's transferred to that medium and then brought up to the cooling tower where that heat is expelled out through the use of fans primarily. It'd be an air-cooled device.
So the fans would be the, correct me if I'm wrong, the fans would be the source of any noise that might emanate from that?
Correct, there is no, there are no compressors associated with the cooling tower.
Okay, and then condensers. And some of those condensers are located on the portion of the dorms that are closer to the residential section, so could you inform the Board and the public what impact those condensers might have? What do they do, and what is the sound impact?
These are, these condensing units are small units, similar to that would be found at a residential scale. They're there to provide cooling to IT closets throughout the buildings, and so their location is determined partly by the, the locations of those IT rooms. These are small units, and the parapets that they are behind are pretty tall, so I think that the sound from them will be completely lost by the time they get to any property line.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Rice.
Okay, any of the other parties that are in the room have any questions for this witness? Okay, does the Board have any questions?
I just have a few. I just want to be, I want to get some clarity on the noise on the roof. The noise will be emanating from the cooling towers because of the fans that are used to force air through the cooling towers?
It's the noise from the fan and the, the air itself.
Yeah. Was any consideration given into using geothermal systems to eliminate the need for cooling towers on the roofs?
We did not specifically study that, but experience has shown that the amount of area required for the geothermal wells would be very high for a unit, or for a development of this size. I wouldn't be able to tell you specific ratios, but it's, I anticipate that the need would be, would greatly exceed what the site could provide.
But those calculations were not done?
They were not.
So it is possible, we just don't know?
I guess we could say anything is possible, but I do not think it's likely.
Okay. I'll say, that's my only question, I'll say the other questions for the later witness.
Any other Board questions for this witness?
Well, how is it that you know there will be no compressors? What's, what system are you going to use that's not going to have compressors?
We're using a mechanical system that consists of chillers within a mechanical basement, and the cooling towers on the roof of the building, systems that are used on other academic buildings and commercial buildings, and those are the way those systems work.
So the chiller will be in the basement, that's why it won't have any, won't be any noise?
So the rooftop equipment does not have that noise component.
Anything else from the Board? Okay. Mr. Canelia, you have another witness?
Yes, please.
And Alex, you've been, parentheses, sworn in under oath before the Board?
I have.
And you were previously qualified as an expert in civil engineering?
I was.
By letter dated July 18th marked as exhibit T-1, Villanova was requested to indicate circulation and access for a mechanical slash loading pit area on the easterly portion of the student housing. Have you performed such an exercise?
We have.
And can you describe for the Board what it indicates? I believe you're referring to A-22, is that accurate?
Correct, yeah, the exhibit on the screen now was the previously mentioned exhibit A-22, which is a site plan of the proposed CICD development. In the area along Ithyn Avenue noted, service yard is the main loading dock for service of the retail space required by the CICD ordinance. The circulation leading to and from that loading dock would be vehicles traveling along Lancaster or north Ithyn would travel south on Ithyn Avenue, make a right turn into the facility, into the roadway or service drive behind the residence halls, pull past the loading dock, and then back down the hill, so that their rear of their tractor trailer would face the loading dock that's within that mechanical yard, be able to unload their facilities or services into the basement, which would then be distributed internally through elevators and hallways throughout the campus to the various retail spaces, and then would pull forward, exiting the service yard, making a right, traveling behind the dorms, underneath the pedestrian bridge, to Church Walk, where they could either travel east or west along Lancaster Avenue.
How many loading burs are being provided?
We are proposing three. There is the main loading dock, which we just talked about, noted as the service yard on the, on the A-22. Then in building 1C, which is the easternmost building of the West Complex, there's a smaller box truck style loading dock for any small retail or university space needed in that building. And then the Performing Arts Center itself has its own dedicated loading dock for deliveries required to that facility.
Do the loading burs have adequate and unobstructed access to the street service driver alley?
Yes, they do.
Do they have adequate maneuvering space?
Yes, they do.
Do they block or interfere with the use of any automobile access ways?
They do not.
Do they block or interfere with the use of any parking facilities?
No.
Do they block or interfere with the use of any fire lanes?
No.
Do they block or interfere with the use of any pedestrian ways?
No.
Are there adequate clear sight distances or triangles?
Yes, there's no interference from any sightlines because of the loading docks.
Do they back out onto a public street?
They do not.
And are the loading facilities located between a building and the right-of-way of an arterial or major collector?
They are not.
And actually, those questions I asked you are all contained in the CICD.
Correct, they're all standards of the ordinance.
Okay. By the same letter, Villanova was asked that plans be provided showing turning movement templates, and how the area will provide for service and delivery vehicles. Did you also provide such an analysis for that?
Yes, we provided exhibits A-19, A through D, I believe, which highlights the turning movements of the vehicles, the movements we just described.
And do you want, so, do you want to go to A-19A?
So A-19A shows a tractor trailer traveling south on Ithyn Avenue, making a right turn into the service drive, pulling forward, and then backing down the hill, and having sufficient space in the driveway and within the mechanical zone, or the service yard, to back up to the loading dock, and then, once again, travel forward and, and continue out through the rear of the residence halls. 19B shows a box truck, which would be the method of delivery to the Performing Arts Center, making both a right turn and a left turn into the easternmost driveway that leads to the parking garage behind the Performing Arts Center, in between the Performing Arts Center and the softball fields. It also shows the ability for the box truck to make a right turn down the service drive in between the PAC and the garage, and backing into the loading dock to provide deliveries.
C, I believe?
C shows, now this would be the exiting movement of a tractor trailer coming through the gate underneath the pedestrian bridge, making a right onto Church Walk, and then making a left onto Route 30 to continue away from the property.
And D?
D has two movements, both at the intersection of Ithyn and 30, which shows the box truck leaving the service drive between the PAC and the garage, through the gate, making a right onto north Ithyn, and traveling left onto 30. And then, the second portion of the drawing shows a tractor trailer making the right turn from 30 onto south Ithyn to head towards the service yard and the main residence hall driveway.
Also, in one of the review letters, Villanova was asked regarding the driveway to the east of the PAC.
I'm correct.
And maybe John can?
Yeah, actually, we believe 19 shows it a little bit better.
So we're referring to, what exhibit is that, John?
This is?
19B?
Yeah, A-19B.
And regarding that driveway to the east of the PAC, the Performing Arts Center, is there a left turn out of that driveway?
Now, the traffic study recommended a restriction for a right turn only at that entrance, so the plan has been updated to provide a channelization island to force right turn movements for the exiting movement.
And, so there is a left turn restriction coming out of that?
Yeah, you're able to turn right out, and then left and right into the property, but you cannot make a left onto Lancaster Avenue from that driveway.
Okay, how about truck access in and around the PAC?
It would be similar, the main driveway leads directly to the garage, but the trucks would travel along that driveway, and then there's a service drive in between the PAC and the garage, which is gated at the Ithyn end to restrict access. So any deliveries would be able to use that specific area for maneuvering to get in and out of the loading dock as needed.
Now, let's talk a little bit, there is also some questions regarding stormwater management?
There were.
Currently, what's the existing impervious coverage on the CICD?
Within the CICD, it's currently 92% impervious.
And what is the impervious coverage being reduced to?
The plans that were submitted have a post-development 69% impervious coverage, so it's a reduction of 2.73 acres of impervious from the CICD area.
So you're taking, just by this development, you're actually reducing impervious by almost three acres?
Almost three acres, correct.
Now, there is a question regarding watersheds. The watershed for this CICD, what area does it encompass, and where does it go?
In order to try and identify the regional water, stormwater issues in the area, we picked a point of interest at the entrance to Clemacrome Park downstream of the property and modeled, or did some analysis of all the properties and streams that feed that point, and analyzed the flow to, to that area.
And what did that indicate?
That?
Well, let me ask you first, do other areas of campus have different watersheds than the area proposed for the CICD?
Yeah, there's a variety of areas in which the, the property owned by Villanova drains, the CICD drains towards Clemacrome Park for the most part, as we discussed. The area of West Lancaster Parking drains to the west towards the 30 and 320 intersection, and the majority of main campus drains north away from, away from the CICD area.
Okay, now, what's the effect on stormwater just by reducing the amount of the impervious, not counting any stormwater management?
As discussed, we reduce the impervious on the, on the CICD area by 2.73 acres. So during a two-year storm event, that would be a 19% reduction in runoff from the property just by reducing the impervious.
And is Villanova actually, excuse me, during what storm event?
The two-year storm event?
Thank you.
And is Villanova actually proposing stormwater management on, on the CICD as well?
Yeah, the intention of the university is to provide volume management for one inch of runoff from the proposed impervious surfaces through a combination of different green infrastructure BMPs, such as rain guards, vegetated swales, infiltration facilities, et cetera.
Okay, sorry. And what's the effect, what would the effect of that be on stormwater?
In addition to the benefits by reducing the impervious, managing that one inch of runoff would generate an additional 20% reduction in runoff for the property for a total of 39% total.
Excuse me, you've kind of lost me, the last two or three questions on volume and all, could you go back over that?
To clarify, there's, there's two benefits to the project from a stormwater perspective. One, by redeveloping the site, we're reducing impervious. So we're taking close to three acres of pavement out of the watershed altogether. That reduces runoff from the property by 20% without building a single stormwater facility. You got a, just a baseline 20% reduction in runoff. Then, in addition to that, we intend to provide one inch of runoff treatment over the impervious we do build for this project, you get another 20% reduction in runoff from adding those facilities in. So the runoff from the property is reduced by 40% for the project with what we intend to do.
Did you perform a downstream analysis for the CICD?
Yes, we did.
And what did your analysis reveal as to the property covered by the CICD to Villanova's contribution to the downstream analysis?
Yeah, the study we did was, was a regional study looking at what flow is contributing to all the streams that flow in this area, and then basically flow through Clemacrome Park. And our analysis shows that the CICD will contribute 7% of the flow to that area, and 9% of the volume to that area. After the proposed improvements, I should clarify.
Right, that's both the reduction in impervious and the stormwater management.
Correct.
Stormwater management, is that really an issue for conditional use, or is that really something that's resulted?
No, it's a land development issue when you have the detailed design drawings prepared.
One of the review letters requested that Villanova provide for no surface discharge for a 10-year storm, and even 100-year storm, is that even possible?
It's not a practical alternative. In Pennsylvania, the typical standard is the one-inch storm, or you'll also hear people refer to the change in the two-year storm. Comparing it to a one-year storm? Comparing it to a one-year storm, management of the 10-year storm is five times the volume and management of the 100-year storm is eight times the volume. It's an extremely large increase above an industry standard or a typical industry standard.
And what does that mean when you have to provide that type of, or even if you can't provide?
Yeah, it means the area that is required for storage is so large, and in Pennsylvania, the soils typically aren't good enough to absorb a volume of water that's that great. The soils typically just aren't good enough.
There was a question regarding the infiltration detention facilities for the West Lancaster Parking Lot. Will you comply with Radnor Township stormwater requirements?
Yes, we will. The intention is to provide similar stormwater facilities for the West Lancaster Parking as we're providing for the housing.
And so, you will be providing stormwater facilities for that?
Yes, we will.
Will the entire project comply with Radnor Township stormwater requirements and their ordinance?
Yes.
Now, have you reviewed the memorandum and prepared by Michelle Adams?
I have.
And that letter recommends that Villanova meet the ordinance by, by what method of peak rate control?
They speak to a way to change the way you analyze the calculations you do for stormwater by using a method prepared in Maryland called the change in curve number method.
I'm sorry, the what?
Change in curve number method.
Is it possible for any developer, not alone Villanova, to use this Maryland change in curve number method?
No, it's not. The Radnor Code has a specific section of their code on the way that the calculation methodology must be done, and it's based on a countywide Act 167 plan.
And can you adjust those Act 167 plans? Can a township adjust an Act 167 plan?
The Act 167 plan covers more than just Radnor Township. There's more agencies involved than just this township. And the township was required to pass local ordinances that met a minimum standard against what they put out as called a model ordinance, and the township alone doesn't have any authority to modify the calculation methods from that global plan.
And even if you use the Maryland methodology, would Villanova be able to control more than one inch of runoff?
We haven't done the detailed design drawings required by land development. We've reviewed our current design approach, and as we testified previously, we're targeting to manage the runoff from one inch. But if during land development, if soil conditions are good and site constraints allow, we'll provide more if feasible.
Now, the letter also refers to green infrastructure. Is Villanova providing any green infrastructure?
Yes, we are. As we spoke previously, we want to provide volume control for one inch with a variety of green infrastructure, one of which is reduction in impervious surfaces, and then a combination of rain gardens, vegetated swales, porous pavement, green roofs, and infiltration facilities throughout the project.
And even though Villanova is proposing to provide that, are they receiving any credit towards the detention systems for using this green infrastructure?
As the Radnor Code is currently written, you're not allowed to use the green infrastructure credit to reduce the size of your stormwater facilities for detention.
Thank you, nothing further.
Mr. Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Tweedy, first of all, with regard to the templates that you've provided, how will you keep trucks from turning right on Lancaster Avenue to continue east?
You mean for the restricted left turn movement at the driveway?
No, right turn out of the facilities.
I'm not sure I understand the location we're talking about.
Do you show any of the movements of trucks turning east onto Lancaster Avenue in your template?
I don't believe so.
Okay, and why is that?
We tried to pick the most restrictive movements. It just becomes a cluttered plan if you have too many movements. So, we picked the ones we felt controlled the location of the curb lines. We could provide additional if requested by township staff.
So, if township, if the township traffic engineer indicates that you're missing some of these movements, you'll be happy to comply at land development, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. One of the templates, that is A-19A, does that show a truck turning movement over a pork chop?
Well, there's an option for amenable curb, or the inside of that curb has a wide radius there, so there's a variety of ways that you can treat that internal radius.
I'm directing your attention to A-19A.
Correct, which is on the screen.
Yeah, I think, let me just stop for a minute, because I think some of these are misnumbered. What we have is not what's on your system.
That's what I want, right there.
So, that, yeah, that's A-19A in the exhibits that have been handed out. So, there may be one missing, Mr. Canilia, one that you have that the board doesn't have and Mr. Bowles doesn't have. We have an A-19 and then an A-19A, I think through G. I'm sorry, C.
I think the confusion comes from my end with the electronic. The earlier series of documents, if we had multiples, the first sheet was labeled A and the second was labeled B. This set was numbered slightly differently, where the first sheet did not receive a letter designation, then the second one was labeled A. So, it's my confusion driving the machine today.
Okay, I mean, just so the record's clear, though, what we're looking at is what the board has and I've marked as Exhibit A-19A.
Correct.
Okay. And that's your question, Mr. Bowles?
That appears to depict a truck turning movement over a pork chop.
Yeah, and we haven't decided what material that is. We haven't worked out those details with township staff during review. There's opportunity for that to be paint striping, amenable curb, or the other opportunity is the eastern curb line radius could be increased to shift that island further east to open up more room for that movement, or car.
Okay, another land development issue. Does the, do these plans contemplate any specific times for deliveries?
I'm not aware of any, that would be an operational question.
Can you, Mr. Tweedy, in plain English, describe what it means to manage one inch of runoff?
Basically, the math is you just total up all the proposed impervious surfaces you have for a project, multiply by one inch, and then that water has to be stored in a facility and either infiltrated into the ground, evaporated, or reused somewhere on the property, either, there's a variety of ways to use it, irrigation, et cetera.
So, that it doesn't flow off the property?
Yeah, the intention is for it not to leave the property.
Is the soil, is the ground suitable for absorption?
That's a land development question, and we haven't performed those studies.
But if it's not, you're obligated to comply with that requirement by means of alternative stormwater methods, management methods.
Yeah, I mean, there's different methods spelled out in the Radnor Code on, it's really a discussion topic with the township engineers, staff, and board during land development process to optimize what the site can manage with the soil conditions that we find.
Would you distinguish between flow and volume, please?
It's a little hard to do in layman's terms, but the way, the best analogy I have for it is thinking about cars driving onto a road and metered lights at an entrance onto, say, the Blue Route. Flow or volume is the number of cars that are waiting to get on the road, and flow is how quickly you let those cars enter. So, a detention system is the metering light. It's the same volume of cars, but you're only letting one car go on every couple of minutes. It's the same with water. There's a certain amount of volume of water, that's the runoff volume, and then how quickly you let it leave the property is the flurry.
Okay, so that if you do manage the first, the one inch of runoff, there is no flow?
Right, that's like taking a car off the road and it never leaving the garage.
And there's no volume to flow?
Right.
Okay. You mentioned that you did a downstream analysis, and your testimony was in the CICD area, there was 7% of flow and 9% of volume, and you confused me there.
Basically, what we're trying to say is, in the regional watershed, where all the properties in this area drain into the same stream, the contribution, the proportional contribution of this 13-acre CIC development is less than 10% of the total flow in the area for both volume and rate. Rate is nine percent...
Go ahead.
Rate is 7%, volume's 9%.
What's the significance of that?
That we only contribute 10% of, less than 10% of the water in this area.
And what's your contribution without these stormwater things? What's it reduced from?
From the CICD, yeah, I have the numbers here. From a rate perspective, it starts at 10% and goes down to 7, and then on a volume perspective, it starts at 14 and goes to 9%.
So, we're comparing for flow or rate, 7% to 7 to 10%?
For rate, currently, it's 10%, and the rate reduction will knock it down to 7. For volume, it's currently 14%, and with the proposed improvements, it would drop to 9.
Well, I thought you said the current rate was 7 to 10%, and the current volume was 9 to 14%?
The reductions.
Oh, okay.
So, when you talk about flow, we start at 10 today, and with the improvements, we would reduce to 7. From a volume perspective, we'd start at 14% and drop to 9.
You mentioned that controlling the stormwater surface discharge for a 10-year storm is not practical, correct?
Correct.
What storm do you intend to control with the facilities that will be put in?
Well, the control is the one-inch runoff, which is, it's not, that's not necessarily mapped to a specific storm. For reference, a two-year storm is a little over three inches. So, it's, some people call it the one-year storm, some people call it the half, the six-month storm, when you talk about one inch. It's somewhere in that range.
But it is my understanding that if during the development of the plans at land development time, if you can achieve greater control, you will do so.
That's what we testified to, and we would, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, that's all I have.
Any of the other parties have questions for this witness? Okay. Please state your name.
Leslie Morgan, 12 Farm Road, Friends to Preserve Radnor. Hi, Alex, just one question. One question on stormwater and one question on the loading docks. So, the question on the stormwater I have is, I think I heard the word intent, you intend to.
Yeah, it's a land development issue. We don't have the soil test, we don't know what the soil is, so we can't speak specifically about it until we do the detailed design, which you don't do until land development.
Right, but you were able, I mean, in stormwater control, you could create systems for getting the zoning code, which would be not an intent, but a condition of a certain kind of storm. You could design one for this project, yes?
I don't know that I understand the question.
Okay, you said, this is a, like, we don't even know what kind of storm it is. It's a six-month storm or a one-year storm?
Well, it's one inch of runoff.
Okay, it's one inch. We're, in this audience, used to, even laymen's, are the two-year, five-year, 10-year storm. You could control a two-year storm, could you not, engineering-wise?
We don't know until we do the soil test and the detailed design. We don't have that information yet.
Maybe I'm not. I guess I'd like to ask the question one more way, Nick. Would you be willing to make it a condition of land development that you control the site at a more than, at a minimum of one inch?
I don't know that I can speak to what the university would agree to for a condition.
So, you would like to, but you don't know yet.
What the design that we've been moving forward with, as we've reviewed, we intend to manage the one inch. That's what we've anticipated providing during land development pending. That's what we intend to provide, but we have to do the soil test and the detailed design to confirm it, which is what we do during land development.
Okay. And then, the only question I have on the loading docks was very similar to lawyer Bowles, and it would be feasible to make a condition on the delivery times, correct? Are you aware of that?
Once again, it's an operational item, and I'm not sure how the university manages operations for delivery, so I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
Have you ever worked on plans that do make that a condition?
I know certain townships have codes speaking to that, but I haven't worked on any that specifically do it. I've had to comply with township codes that regulate that in the past in other townships.
Okay, thank you.
Any other parties?
Good evening. Mr., do I have to state my name?
Please.
Tony Bailey.
Go ahead.
Mr. Tweedy, you testified that you would meet the Radnor Code for stormwater. Does that, am I correct in stating that Villanova University is not going to attempt to exceed Radnor Township's stormwater standards?
That's not what we said. We said during land development, we would review the design, and if the soils and site conditions accommodated it, we would provide as much as feasibly possible.
I'm just stating that you testified that you would meet the Radnor Code for stormwater, and I'm just stating again, does that mean Villanova will not, will not attempt to exceed those standards?
Question was asked and answered.
Yeah, I think what he's saying is that they're going to meet the ordinance, they plan to try to do the one inch, and if the conditions, he's not going to make, he's not going to commit. I guarantee, he's not going to do that, but if the conditions, and I guess once you, have you done soil testing?
We're starting the process to do those.
Okay, so for infiltration, there's got to be soil testing. Typically, that'll be done land development. Township engineer will look at that and probably have an opinion as to whether they can exceed what's in the code, but they're only required to meet what's in the code unless they agree otherwise.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you.
Any other questions from the parties? Any questions from the board?
I have a couple. The 40% reduction, what's the unit on that? 40% of what?
Well, that was, that was, we were talking about runoff volumes, that would be in cubic feet.
So, volume is 40% volume?
Forty, oh yeah, 40% of the runoff volume, correct.
I don't understand, what do you, explain what you mean by 10% of the flow rate. So, does that mean the peak flow coming off?
We modeled the whole watershed, and at the bottom of the watershed, and I have the specific numbers, but let's, I think it's something like 800 cubic feet per second, or 750 cubic feet per second going into Clemacrome Park. So, we...
That's not from Villanova?
That's not from Villanova, for the whole watershed heading into Clemacrome Park is...
And the peak rate coming from the CICD is 1/10 of that, 10%?
Yeah, it's 1/10 of that number.
So, 80 instead of 800?
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, very good.
And then, my last question is, what's the trigger in our ordinance for a project like this? Because the project will reduce impervious cover, so this would have a different trigger than a conventional land development that would increase impervious cover, correct?
Right, and there's two different standards in the ordinance, and depending on how you read it, there's different opinions on what applies, and that's why we're stating that we intend to follow the one-inch guidance. There's two standards in the code. The increase in the two-year storm event... The increase in the two-year storm event, which because we're reducing impervious is a negative number-
Right, so you would automatically comply with that?
We automatically comply with that. And then there's another standard, which in the code is written, only for projects between 500 and 1,500 square feet, which we wouldn't apply for, or wouldn't apply to us. But that targets one inch of runoff. We intend to meet that, whether or not people believe that we're required to meet it. Our intention is to follow that standard.
And if, if you did absolutely nothing, you would still have a volume reduction, correct?
Of 20%.
And you would still have a peak rate reduction?
Correct.
So, so the project in and of itself will reduce stormwater. And then the stormwater control measures that you will do on top of that will further reduce the stormwater.
Correct. Just by the nature of redeveloping a parking lot and reducing impervious coverage improves stormwater.
Thank you.
Other board questions?
Yeah, I had a question on exhibit 19B. If you could bring that up.
Probably our C.
Yep. It was noted earlier that there's no right-hand turn coming out of this exit.
Yeah, and we could provide that to the township. So we were trying to keep the plan clean, so we didn't, we didn't provide that movement, but we can provide it to staff and review it.
But the turn itself is allowed?
Yeah, the turn is allowed, we just don't show it.
Right, and my concern is that to make that turn from the, the right or left lane, as shown on this, that you're going to be in that left-hand turn lane. So any, you know, so isn't it going to be a problem with that left-hand turn lane that goes beyond the center point of the road? Making a right-hand turn there will have a truck stopped if there's, if there's a car in that left-hand turn lane?
We'd have to review the, the turning template. I-
I'd submit that it looks like that would be the case here. Without any other evidence, I think that that would be the case.
Without reviewing the template, I can't speak to it.
And that would necessarily cause a, if that did in fact occur, that would cause traffic delays, wouldn't it? A truck stopped there waiting while the car couldn't move could cause delays and lights to change multiple times until got cleared up, I guess, couldn't it?
A truck turning, well, I don't know what you mean about delays, because if, I believe if a car is able to turn left, the truck would be able to turn right at the same movement. It depends how the signal's designed.
No, no, because the truck would be coming out, a car would be there, the truck would stop in the intersection, and it would tie up the traffic until the-
The four-lane highway.
Until the car, the car would move or get out of the way. So that, so that, that, that could happen. You would, you'd have to admit.
I don't know that I understand what you're saying, but if-
The truck is going to cross two lanes and go into the third lane, the left-hand turn lane. It's not, it's going to make a right turn on those two lanes.
Oh, on Lancaster?
Yes.
Oh.
Certainly it could.
No, I don't believe, I mean, I'd have to review the template, but I don't believe, it's got two lanes.
But we don't, we don't have a drawing, so we can't, we can't tell. So I, I would say that that is, would be a concern of mine, so. So we should, if Commissioner Springley would kindly pipe down, that'd be greatly appreciated. So I would, I would say that if you would supply that, that would be helpful, because it seems to me that that, that's a concern that I would have.
Okay, yeah, and we, we agreed to provide it.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Yeah, I have, on, on the subject of detention or versus retention, at the beginning of your testimony, Mr. Tweedy, you talked about current impervious being 62%.
92%.
I'm sorry, 92%. And the proposed being 69%.
Correct.
And then I kind of got confused when Commissioner Curly asked you a question and he said if, if you, if the university does nothing on stormwater, it would achieve that reduction. But the fact of the matter is, you would have to do lots of things to get that 23% reduction, would you not?
What, what that discussion was, there's two things that improve stormwater runoff in a volume perspective from this redevelopment. One, the physical removement of pavement and converting that pavement to grass or a planting bed. So that, we are taking away 2.73 acres of impervious and turning that, what is today parking lot, will then become landscape, grass, some facility. Directly related to that is a 20% reduction in stormwater coming off the property, just by the physical removal of that pavement. Then there's 69% of the C I C D area is left as paving. We're agreeing to capture, or we're intending to capture one inch over that square footage and then infiltrate it or provide whatever volume management. And that's another 20% reduction attributed to that.
And that's when your testimony talked about rain gardens and swales and other things.
Various green infrastructure.
What about underground?
Yeah, the, the last thing I said was infiltration trenches, which would be stone beds under parking lots, et cetera.
Okay. Okay, so that would be retention, not detention?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just one real quick. Turning movements, traffic flow through the site, are they all matters that will be resolved later on in the process?
Yeah, we would review all that again during land development.
And that's typically a land development issue?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bowles, nothing else? Okay, Mr. Canilia, you have an-
Wait, let me follow up on that. We've heard this several times, that there's many issues that will be, that will be determined based on land development proceedings. So why would we review truck movements here then?
I'll, I'll answer that. Your conditional use ordinance provides that the university shall provide certain information. That's the information we're providing. The township staff has asked for additional information, even though it's not in the ordinance. We're attempting to provide that as well, to make a full disclosure to everyone involved of what is being intended with this project.
Well, and I appreciate that. And in the, in the light of, in the spirit of that, of making full disclosure, then we should discuss these issues and not say we're going to, anything that can't be resolved, we're going to put it off until land development.
There are issues typically resolved at land development. It's not issues for, there's going to be so many issues rich, rich at land development. There are not issues for this conditional use application.
Well, again, you can't, shouldn't have, we can't have it both ways. Either we're going to get it, we're going to look at this and just talk about these issues now, or we'll wait till land development.
Okay, just Commissioner Fisher wants me just to, so everyone sitting up here is clear that at the end of the day, this is, their burden is to meet what's in the zoning ordinance, present enough testimony and evidence that, you know, they can do this for conditional use, just like if it was in front of a zoning hearing board. This board then will vote to approve, to deny, approve with conditions. So if there's things that you don't have sufficient evidence, a majority of you think you don't have sufficient evidence, you can attach some conditions to an approval. But they have not filed fully engineered plans. And there's no way that that kind of detail would come in front of a board like this, sitting here in a conditional use application. And they're going, they're going to have to do that at land development phase. And you're going to have another opportunity.
And I, I understand that. I actually, would actually take Villanova's and attorney, Canilia's side on this and say that I would think that we're looking at far more detail than would be appropriate for a conditional use.
It's always, it's always a question of how much, and it's, he's got to make a judgment call, how much detail does he want to put into a case like this? Because it is a, a large project. But he's got to put enough in that he feels comfortable, he's met his burden under the zoning ordinance.
And, and I understand that. And my only point is, to the extent that he does put it in, that he should be ready to respond fully to the questions that are asked.
If he can.
And, and that, and that saying, well, we'll work it out on land development is, is not responsive.
Asking the same questions, even if we didn't testify to it, and that would be responding the same way?
Understood, but, but you submitted it, so we have it to look at. That's my point.
Okay, we're done with this witness, correct? Do you have another witness?
Remember, we had the acoustics person that we discussed last time that can't be here this evening?
Yes.
So we're going to pass him to the next meeting. I also have available Chris Kowalski, because Mr. Bowles has asked us to make him available. So he would really just be available for cross-examination. But I know that Mr. Bowles intends to call Amy, so perhaps, you know, that would be the-
Mr. Bowles, you ready to go with Amy Kaminsky? Or another witness?
I was ready to go with another witness.
Okay. So you're, other than your acoustic engineer person for next, for the 23rd?
And the only other thing we may present, and I'll present it ahead of time so Mr. Bowles can see it, is we received several review letters. And we just may have, you've heard the testimony on those review letters already, but we may just file a written response as well, which is would really be the rehash of the testimony.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Bowles, you want to call your, your witness?
I'm just a little confused. You mentioned Chris Kowalski, Nick. And then we switched on to something else. Did you say you intended to call him or not?
No, that's your, he's here, he'll be, he's here at every meeting. So if you intend to call him, you-
So if you have questions for a representative of Villanova and not a consultant for Villanova?
I know that the neighbors have, residents have questions of a representative from Villanova. So to that extent, I have just one question of him. And, but I, I know the neighbors have questions, so-
Do you want to do that tonight, or you want to do it?
We could do that tonight. I, I have a sense we're going to get through tonight fairly easily, fairly quickly.
Okay, well, you can call witness, however you want to do it.
Okay, so then maybe we could have Mr. Kowalski?
That could, I don't know how many, I, I think-
All right, well, let's see where we get.
Yeah, why don't we see where we go, Bill?
Okay, that's all right with me.
Listen through to other witnesses, because I, I don't want you to have to bring him back in case, yeah, I think they have a lot of questions for Chris, I heard.
You don't want me to bring who back?
You're, well, Amy or the other witness you're presenting this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Bowles, Ms. Kaminsky ready?
It's up to you.
Is she ready?
Yeah.
What's your, what's your pledge?
I don't know why we don't get Mr. Kowalski out of the way now.
That's fine, it's your call.
Well, then, let's-
It's your call.
Yeah, yeah, let's get it done.
Okay.
So-
Mr. Kowalski, come on up and be sworn in.
It was actually Mr. Bowles' case right now, except for that one acoustic person.
And he can call Mr. Kowalski, or he can call anyone else in the room?
Christopher Kowalski, K O V O L S K I.
Good evening, Mr. Kowalski, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Good, we've not met, but nice to meet you in this capacity. I'm just going to state before I ask you my one question, that from my point of view, during this process, I've received nothing but cooperation from the university and Mr. Canilia for, to all of our requests, some of which asked them to go further than they need to at this stage in order to get it all out there. So I thank you for that. My one question, and I'm sure you've been prepped for it. What's Villanova's intention with regard to the Aldwin Triangle?
Other than preserving the required acreage as in accord-
Exactly, the question is, will they preserve the entire area within the Aldwin Triangle?
As part of our governance, our Board of Trustees makes all decisions regarding property and real estate. That is a condition that we'd be happy to bring to them as part of all the conditions that might be tied to approval of this project.
Very good, thank you. That's all I have.
Any of the residents, any other parties, come on up and, one at a time, state your name and ask your questions.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. Chris, do you remember, and I was going to bring five copies, but they're sitting on the dining room table, that you and I had an exchange of emails while I was trying to get clarity as to how many students, where they live, blah, blah, blah?
I do.
Do you remember that? Okay. So the purpose of my questions tonight is to gain further clarity in the number of students, where the students live now, and where they'll live when the new dorm complex is complete. To clarify for myself the verity of Villanova's initial statement that the new complex would get the students out of the neighborhood. And we know now that isn't necessarily going to happen. So I have a series of questions and I, you and I spoke yesterday at the day of service celebration. So you, I heard you say, if I don't have the answer, I'll tell you that. So how many undergrad students need or want housing on campus while Villanova? How many want it?
I'm not sure I can answer that question that way. What I can tell you is that we have 4,400 beds and approximately 6,400 undergraduate students. We guarantee housing for up to three years. We do not require any of our undergraduates to live on campus, but an overwhelming, almost the entire freshman class lives on campus. Similar percentage of sophomores do as well, and some juniors.
Okay, so you've, let me continue. You've given me a little of that information. For freshmen, the, the newspaper this fall said there were 1,670 freshmen. I was in the Main Line Times on August 20th of this year. How, if, and I, and I heard you just say they are not required to live on campus.
Correct.
But many of them do.
Wait a minute, is that correct? 1,670 freshmen? Let's establish that he agrees with you.
I can't speak to the specificity of that actual number, but it sounds consistent with the size of our typical freshman class.
Okay, go ahead.
And so you've said that the freshmen are not required to live on campus, but if they choose to live on campus, are there any restrictions?
They cannot bring a car.
Okay.
Nor can sophomores. Can sophomores.
So if they can live in the neighborhoods and have their auto, autos with them, might that be a motivation to not live on campus? I'm thinking of kids who might have a part-time job, or they need to get home, but it is conceivable.
It's conceivable, although I will tell you that, that, that may have been the case in prior generations of students who came to Villanova, when we had far fewer housing. But these days, it's, it's just not common to find freshman students to come to Villanova and not live on campus. Our tuition alone is over $40,000, room and board adds to that. And students these days overwhelmingly want a residential experience and are looking for that, and that's what we provide. That's why I say in very rare cases do we have students who truly commute.
We do have one freshman student house in our neighborhood, so I do know that. And in the past, you're right, it was awful, because they all had their cars at Radnor House, and they would walk back and forth. And that's why we have permits.
Ms. Pilling, Ms. Pilling?
Okay.
You have to ask questions, it's not a conversation.
So where do the freshmen live on campus?
Most of them live on South Campus. And there are some that live in other, other places on, on Main Campus.
All right. Do you know how many sleeping rooms there are on South Campus? Not beds, but rooms?
I don't.
So in South Campus, where I hear you say most of the students live, are there singles?
No, other than for resident assistants or people of that nature, the rooms are not single rooms.
Are there doubles?
There are doubles.
And are there triples?
There are rooms, they're used as triples.
Were they originally built as triples?
No, that, not with that intention, no.
Okay. So-
That I'm aware of.
So shortly following the vote and the Villanovan is, is sitting on the chair, I believe that you stated that in building the new dorm, you were going to be able to de-triple some of these rooms, is that correct?
That is correct.
So in these triples, would you call them overcrowded?
Uh, no, I wouldn't call them overcrowded. They certainly meet township code with regard to space. Their, the rooms are, I think you'd rather have two people in them, but-
Can you estimate how many of those triples that were built as doubles might qualify? Do you have a number?
Could you restate the question?
How many of the triples, let's say just on South Campus, how many, how many of those rooms do you suspect are going to be de-tripled, which will move a student elsewhere?
I anticipate that in our new development, as a result of the new development, we will be able to house at least 1,000 students who are currently living off campus. So the balance of the beds that will be created, and they may not necessarily be there, but- but we will gain flexibility in other dormitories, residence halls on campus would help us to address the tripling that we have.
In the future, when this complex is built, what I'm going to call the dorm complex, because I don't think it has a name yet, will the freshmen live in that new dorm complex?
I don't believe so, but we have not indicated what mix of, of students will live there. It's primarily focused on upperclassman housing, our desire is to bring upperclassman housing there.
Because that brings to mind to me that you've got a bistro on the first floor and an 18-year-old in a room, and that presents a bit of a problem. So, so where do the students living in, on South Campus have their dining facilities?
Our students are free to eat, we have many dining facilities on campus, there is a dining facility on...
Is there a dining complex on, on South Campus?
Yes.
Okay. So, to the sophomores, do you know how many sophomores there are at Villanova this year?
I, I do not have the number.
And where do they live? If they're living on campus?
Many of them live in our quad, which is by the Connolly Center in Sheehan and Sullivan Halls. Others live elsewhere.
And if they're living on campus, did I hear you correctly, they cannot have an automobile?
Correct.
In the spaces where they are currently living in this quad, are there any triples?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Are any of the sophomores to be shifted to the new dorm complex?
Not to my knowledge.
So if they moved to the new dorm complex, we'd have the same issue of underage kids where you have a place that has at least a beer license?
I'm going to object, it's, you can only serve on a hall to 21-year-olds in Pennsylvania.
To try and get clarity. I have other questions.
Well, let's, let me just ask you, where are you heading with your questions? Because this is, this is a development that has been testified to.
Well, the end line, the bottom line is, what is an estimation of the number of students who will not be able to be housed on Villanova's campus, who will still potentially live in the neighborhood? That's where I'm going, I'm just trying...
Ask him that question. Mr. Kowalski, can you answer that question?
As I previously testified to, we believe we'll have at least 1,000 students currently living off-campus be able to move onto campus as a result of this project. With a undergraduate population of roughly 6,400, roughly 4,400 current beds available on campus, you add this 1,000 to it, there'll be roughly 1,000 students still living off-campus.
Can I ask you one last question? Will there be a dining facility in the new dorm complex?
What we're calling the bistro would be operated by our dining services.
Do, will the rooms, will they be singles, doubles, and triples, or suites?
Suite-style, apartment-style residence halls, rather.
Will they have a kitchenette?
I can't speak to the exact design, but the intent is, is that they would be able to prepare their own meals, in some form or fashion.
So they would have to go off-campus to get the food to prepare their own meals?
Not necessarily, there will be a convenience store in that development as well. But we hope they'll continue to patronize the giant, like many of our students do right now.
Okay, thank you. Well, I had several more pages, but...
Okay. Any other questions from any of the parties?
Leslie Morgan, 12 Farm Road, two quick questions on Aldwin. The first one, would Villanova be negatively impacted at all if the neighborhoods decided to go to the township as many of, you know, neighborhoods in Wayne have been successful at, and restricting permanent parking for their residents only on Aldwin Lane? Would that be a problem for the university?
Could you just say that one more time, please?
I'll put it in layman's terms, okay? In many streets that are impacted by large developments, some of the neighbors have successfully gone, the streets, to the township, and they've coordinated, and they get permitted for the homeowners only. So if, because they have been impacted, they're afraid, you know, many people are going to lay their cars there, they'll be ticketed if they do, so that won't be a viable alternative. To prevent that, because we don't want that happening, I'm sure you don't either, if Aldwin Lane residents came and wanted permitted parking for only their homeowners, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't oppose them, would you?
Permit parking on Aldwin Lane for residents only?
Yeah, for, thank you.
We would not be opposed to that.
Okay. And the second thing I have is on Aldwin Triangle, and I may be a little obtuse here, too. I'm glad to hear that you would make that maybe as a condition to preserve the whole thing. I've driven back there and walked it with a lot of the neighbors, and it's in pretty sad condition right now. Could you also, would that be a board-level decision or trustee-level decision at your college to improve the conditions of the Aldwin Triangle right now? It looks pretty decrepit, and I think that's a negative impact on the, on the neighbors, too. Would that be a board level or a trustee level, what level would that be?
I really can't speak to hypotheticals about agreeing to conditions at this point. We take the, the care of our property seriously, I know our facilities people are here, we'd be happy to have them look at some of your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Sarah?
Jim Yonopoulos. I can, might be able to keep this short depending on what Ms. Kaminski is going to providing, be providing testimony for. Is she going to be providing testimony regarding traffic and commentary on Mr. Trevani's analysis?
She's going to provide traffic testimony, so if you have questions...
I have, I have a few questions, but I, I'll have less questions from Mr. Kowalski.
But he's not a, he's not a traffic engineer?
I understand that.
Okay.
I do understand that. Mr. Kowalski, you have been here for the other testimony so far?
I have.
Okay. Are you familiar with in Mr. Trevani's analysis, Appendix G, which defines trip generation and, and has this line graph? It's pretty small on here, but...
It was presented as evidence, the enrollment, enrollment numbers. Generally familiar, yes, I don't have this with me, but yes.
Okay. Can we see what you showed him, please?
Is the enrollment chart showing the enrollment study?
Appendix G from Mr. Trevani's study. That, that study, Appendix G indicates that the student population, in the words preceding Appendix G and preceding this graph, that the population has been flat for the last 20-plus years. My question to you would be, as far as you know, the enrollment data that Villanova has provided to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, as far as you know, they've been providing accurate data for the last 15 years?
I really can't speak to that, I don't provide that data.
Who does provide that data?
Our registrar.
Your registrar, thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
Hi, Tony Bailey, Conestoga Village. Typically, where do the freshmen and sophomores reside? Like in the, you know, which dormitories, or where on campus?
I believe it's already been asked and answered, you said the freshmen reside on South Campus, and the sophomores generally reside in the quad area on main campus.
Okay. And, do you know how many numbers of freshmen and sophomore reside on South Campus?
I, I don't have those numbers.
Like, so in other words, you couldn't tell me how many reside in Good Counsel, St. Monica's, or?
No.
Good Shepherd?
No, I can't.
Now, we've talked about tripling. So my concern as a parent, typically those dorms were built for two in a dormant, in a room. Would there be an issue with safety if there were tripling? Wouldn't it exceed like a code where you can't exceed X amount of people in that residence hall?
Those codes do exist, and even with tripling, our, our rooms do comply.
Okay, thank you. Now, I understand freshmen and sophomores are not allowed to have cars. Are, under special exceptions, can a freshman or sophomore bring a car onto campus?
It does happen on occasion, but it's not common for those exceptions to be granted.
So it's not common, do you have any idea how many of those exceptions are made? And where do those cars reside?
I, I don't have specific numbers, I do know that typically those cars would be parked on South Campus.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just, Mr. Kowalski, I've got a couple of questions. As the, the person that enforces the off-campus student housing issues that we have, right now, I understand your testimony, after all this development is done, there'll be still 1,000 students that are going to commute, are going to live off-campus, and you won't be able to accommodate them on, on campus in the new housing or the old housing, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, and, and I'm just trying to understand administratively how, what information Villanova gives to those students. Because they're either going to try to rent a student rental in Radnor, or they're going to go to Lower Murray, or they're going to be in Conshohocken, but do they get information from Villanova as to student rental housing, licensed student rental housing in Radnor Township?
Yes. Our Office for Resident Life has posted online a list of student-approved housing that they get from the surrounding townships, and that information is available and given to our students who are seeking off-campus housing.
So someone contacts Radnor, and Radnor says these are the licensed, because there's an annual license?
Correct.
Student rental housing. And then that gets posted online, but we don't know whether the students actually go online and read that list, do we?
Specifically, no. Anecdotally, I can tell you that they, that they do.
Okay. So if, if, is there any list that, any information Villanova gives out to certain student rental housing locations that are constantly problematic? That are, have been cited, have been shut down, is there any of that information that goes out?
I, I'm not the person who would give out that information, so I really can't speak to that.
Okay, but that's information, if Radnor had a list, and I'm thinking of some situations where people that don't pay their taxes get their names published in the newspaper in certain municipalities, Radnor has a list of properties that have been problems as long as I've been here, and it seems to be the same problems. Would, could Villanova make that information available to the students that want to live off-campus?
Yeah, I, I can't commit to that, but what I can commit to is I can bring that back to campus. I mean, we advertise the information that we're given. We, we don't get into commentary about each housing, but I think if the township were to decide, that it would be helpful to identify problematic homes, then we would be able to find a way to...
I'm not, well, I'm not thinking of providing commentary, but this is all matters of public record.
A problem house, it's the township's job to shut them down, not Villanova's, and not to give out the information and be sued by the landlord.
It's all, it's all public information, the township, in my view, wouldn't have any liability, it's public information.
Maybe I can say it this way. It's, it's an issue that we take seriously, and if there are ways that the township and the university can work together, we'd be happy to do that.
I mean, it's all public information that township has available. My interest, Commissioner Spengler's, is to make sure that the students get that information, because they're not coming to us, and I don't know what Villanova gives out to these students that are living off-campus, but it's information that they ought to have before they sign a lease and pay what they're paying for the student rentals in this township, which is a substantial amount of money. Just trying to understand what information you give out. Thank you. Now, you are a party, or no?
Yes, a party.
You are, okay.
Philip R., a party with the Garrett Hill Coalition.
Okay, Garrett Hill.
Yeah, Garrett Hill Coalition. The Garrett Hill Coalition.
Right.
I didn't want to interrupt your talk there, when you were, you're questioning, so I held back. Good, Chris, how are you tonight? Good. I also want to follow up on two things, one, just to gain clarity. It's been said during the test hearings here that the dorms will provide rooms for about 1,134 students. Is that, is that the right number? Total?
I believe the number is 1,135.
1,135, okay, great, thanks. And just to gain clarity, I know that you had previously spoken to the fact that you will un-triple a couple of, a number of rooms to do that, and you're saying now that, that you will still have 1,000 students off-campus coming in, which would leave about 135 students coming from a different place on campus to reside in the new dorm, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, that was your belief, is there someone who has a better number than that, that you, that we could refer that to at some point?
What particularly are you looking for clarity on?
Just the ratio of who's, who's new coming into the dorms versus who's already on campus that will just be repurposed to another dorm?
Well, we can't predict where students are going to come from. But what I can tell you is, we, we do have juniors on campus now who would be candidates to move to these dorms as well, that are already on campus. So part of the opportunity we have here is, we offer three years of guaranteed housing, and for those who take us up on it, a junior looking for certain living conditions may not be happy with what's currently available. And so we're able to accommodate them in different ways as a result of this development.
Okay, I appreciate the answer, I, I'm not sure that was, maybe I'd have to ask it a different way, because I don't think it was, it was clear enough. It doesn't matter what year they are, or where, where they came from, but really the fact that you have new students who are off-campus, off-campus students coming into the new dorms, and you have currently campus students coming into those new dorms. I'm trying to get to the number of which is, how much is each? In your estimate?
I, it's, it's very difficult to say, I mean, we're adding 1,135 beds sent, so it's, it's, we're not sure where they're going to come from, we know that...
Didn't you already state how many students on campus are going to fill these, get rid of the tripling? Didn't you already state that?
1,135 beds.
1,135.
Well, I mean, what I said before was, so yes, the math works out to 1,135, but we anticipate that 1,000 students currently that are off-campus will come back into these dorms.
So approximately about 10% of the new dorms will be people who are not coming in off-campus? I'm just trying to follow the math.
Yep.
Okay, I know you're not a traffic guy, I'm not either, but I mean, is it conceivable that if, if the, the traffic and the parking calculations up to this point appear to have been based on 1,135 students from off-campus coming into the, into there, and now if that's reduced by 10%, that that might throw some of those calculations off a little bit, or need to be revisited? Is that possible?
I can't speak to that.
Okay, perhaps someone may want to revise that, or look at that. The other question that you had, you said you're not, you weren't the right person to talk about the design of the rooms, or what's inside the rooms, with their suites or whatnot. Who would be the right person from Villanova to ask that question to eventually?
I believe that's already been provided in testimony, either by the architect, by the architect.
Actually, I tried to ask that question of the architect, and I was told he was not the right person to ask. So you don't, that, you don't know.
What, what is the question?
What is, what is the makeup of the rooms, do they have kitchens in there, that kind of situation? And I tried to ask that of the architect, and...
Like how many students are going to be in each room?
No, no, what is the makeup of the room? Do they have kitchens in the rooms? What is the provisions for meals for these students?
Okay.
That kind of, that kind of question.
Yeah, I think, I think there's been some testimony on that.
I haven't, I haven't heard, I've been here, but I haven't heard it, and I was not...
They said they can make, they can, they, they'll have the ability to eat in their rooms and make dinner.
Right.
Correct.
Testimony.
Okay, but the ability is different from the requirement, in the sense of, are there dining halls specifically made to increase? Let me ask you this question, if you can't answer it, that's fine.
Well, hold on. You want to know whether or not there's going to be dining rooms in the new development?
I want to know if there's going to be dining facilities to handle the increase of 1,000 students on campus.
Okay.
Or are they required, or will we use, need to use the kitchen facilities for meals?
Okay.
Our dining facilities can handle these students.
They can handle that?
Correct.
So they do not have to make meals, they can go ahead and just handle this with existing facilities?
That wasn't your question. Our dining facilities can handle the addition of these students living on campus. Mr. Clouver is here and can speak to what the composition of each room as far as the ability to prepare their own food.
Okay, okay.
I mean, it sounds like the dining rooms, what I just heard, are going to be sufficient, and they're going to be able to cook food-
That was the question.
-in the room.
Yeah.
I mean, is that-
The answer is yes.
Yeah.
Didn't know they had excess capacity in the dining halls, so, there you go. Okay. All right, that's it for now. Thank you.
Yeah, this all-in triangle everybody keeps bringing up. It's my understanding from all the testimony is that the open space set aside is going to be set aside. The land that's left, that people are talking about trying to set aside, you can't build on it. And that the reason we're not setting aside is if SEPTA ever wanted to put a walkway, so, you know, to easier, for handicapped people to get across the tracks, we have to have this land available to do that. So that's one of the reasons we're not setting aside, because we won't have to deal with open space that's been set aside if they wanted to put a walkway. Is that the facts as I know them?
There is some concern about having, maintaining some flexibility for that, and it is important to note, as you said, that we are already setting aside approximately two acres of that land already as part of the CICD.
But the land that's left cannot be developed. It's not big enough to be developed in it. Can it be developed in anything? Can you build anything there?
My understanding is that the setbacks would significantly limit the ability for us to develop it in any way.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other board questions?
I have a few. I just need some clarity. Mr. Kowalski, what is the university's position on the growth of enrollment? Just-
The university's position is that we have no intention of growing our undergraduate enrollment.
Could you just state it again? Someone in the room didn't hear.
Sure. The university's position is that it has no intention of increasing its undergraduate enrollment.
Okay, and during the CICD hearings, you said similar things to the public. I believe you had stated that. Pretty clear?
Throughout, we've been almost three years at this, and I believe throughout that we've been pretty clear about that.
So no intention of increasing the population of the undergraduates?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, what about the graduates?
I don't know enough there. I know that our graduate enrollment has gone down slightly over the past few years. We're restructuring our graduate programs, but we don't anticipate an influx of graduate students who would be coming to campus for classes. Perhaps our enrollment might increase for online and remote learning.
And what about the executive, the new executive programs? Like, the Business School has an executive program.
That enrollment has been stable.
Stable. What is the enrollment of that program?
Of the, of the, I don't have the number.
Like the Executive MBA? No?
The program that meets-
Who would have that information?
A registrar.
Registrar, okay. And what about part-time evening studies? The university used to have a university college. At one time, the population of that student body was about 1,500 students, maybe 1,600 students. Do you know what the population of that is now?
Again, I don't have the enrollment statistics with me. I'm happy to provide them.
Is there any plan to increase the enrollment in, like, a part-time studies program, like a, a grad, a university college-type program?
No, the university college no longer exists, as you know, and our programs take different shapes. I think you see a growth of online and remote learning programs. We have remote locations, the Navy Yard, and in Center City, Greater Ford Prison, and so, you know, I think we're looking for growth in those kinds of programs.
Okay, thank you. You had testified, just prior to me asking questions, that of the 1,135 planned beds in the new dorms, the off-campus students will take about 1,000 of those beds, and the net, the remaining, the 130-some beds, would be filled with existing students who live on campus. Is that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is the university willing to cap residency in the new dorms to prevent the increased density that has occurred in the other dorms? So for instance, you, you built the original dorms, they were approved by the Board of Commissioners in the township, to be two, two occupants per room, and then without getting approval from the township, they became three residents per room.
I'm going to object a little bit, John. I'm not certain if that was ever a condition of any approval.
Okay.
I just don't know. I mean, I don't, I don't recall.
Well, well, let me, let me just say it this way. Would the, would the university be willing to, to, to accept a condition that would cap the residency of the new dorms being built? Meaning if there's 1,135 beds being approved under a plan, would the university be willing to cap the residency of those buildings to the 1,135?
I'm not in a position to agree to any conditions at all at this point. I think we'd need to see what the conditions were at the end of the process.
Okay.
Isn't it one of the good aspects of this, that we're going to get students out of the areas that you represent? And if that's true, why would you want to then put a cap?
Well, it's already been established that no students who live in the neighborhoods will cease to live in our neighborhoods. That's already been established by their economist.
It'll be new students.
Yeah, new, other students that live further out will fill the void. Why is this important?
Excuse me a second, but that, I mean, I'm sorry, but I don't know that that's accurate, because there will be students, but you don't know which students they will be. So what you said is Villanova students will stay the same, but the influx-
Yeah, okay, but economists seem to think-
The influx could be Cabrini, it could be Havaford, it could be-
Sure.
Temple, it could be anyone.
Okay. Well, anyway, I don't want to debate that. The economist said that the line share of the students that live in the neighborhoods are part of Villanova, and with Villanova having 2,000, the need for 2,000 beds, there's a good chance the new students that would fill those neighborhood positions would be from Villanova.
The positive is we get 1,000 more students on campus. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah. No, so anyway, someone, excuse me. Someone asked me why this matters. Why it matters is that if you increase the population on the campus, it leads to more support services, the need for more police, the need for more fire, the need for more medical cover, medical care. So, you know, advanced life support, basic life support. It also has an impact on parking, and one of the conditions that was tested, the reason I'm asking this question is, there's, there has been testimony that established that a certain number of parking spaces would be made available for event parking, and if we have an increase in beds, we may have an increase in parking of students living on campus, which would actually detract from the available parking spaces for events.
450, that's been testified to. There'll be 450 in the new garage.
You know, John, John, I'm sorry, John, John Rice, if John, please let John Fisher ask his questions. Why is Commissioner Spingler answering these?
He's not answering these, he's making statements.
Well, why is Commissioner Spingler having anything to say?
Because I've been sitting through this whole thing. I'm ready to go.
Okay, so I was just, I was just, I just want to end with, again, I'm trying to ask questions, I keep getting interrupted by the board, and I'm allowed to posit information first before a question. I can establish a fact or a piece of information before I ask a question. Okay. Again, I'll ask Chris Kowalski, who is a representative of the university at this time, who's under testimony, is, who is testifying here in front of us. Does the university have any interest at this time in, A, capping undergraduate enrollment? Graduate enrollment? Executive program enrollment?
No.
Okay. And any interest in capping the residency of the new dorms that would be built?
I can't speak to that. I haven't had that conversation.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to establish your responses. Okay, last question. Does the university have a relationship, a working relationship with taxi cab companies in the area?
I'm not sure. I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. Okay, I have no further questions.
Any other board questions?
I did, and also, John, I was trying, wanted you to ask the questions uninterrupted, is what I was, all right, unaccosted. One, one question regarding the economic, or let's see, this is the conditional use development impact statement. Mr. Kowalski, were you in charge of, or did you prepare this document, or who, who was responsible for preparing the, this impact statement?
As I believe has been previously testified to, there are many people who contributed to that.
Understood, but who was responsible for compiling and editing and putting it into its final form? Were you responsible for that, with others directly, directly reporting to you?
I did not submit it. I believe Mr. Clouver put the whole package together.
Mr. Clouver? Has he testified?
He has.
Oh, this one? Okay. So, um, okay. I would like to, I have some more questions for, I was unaware of that, so I had a question for Mr. Clouver.
Let, let's do this. Let's finish with all questions for Mr. Kowalski, then we will take a break, and then we will talk about what other witnesses are going to be asked questions tonight. But let's finish with Mr. Kowalski, so we're staying in order here. So, any questions for Mr. Kowalski?
Well, my questions were, who edited and compiled the information, and Mr. Kowalski said that he did not do that, and it wasn't done under your direction?
Is there a question about the substance in it? I can probably speak better to that.
Well, the question is, was it, was it your responsibility? Did you oversee the compilation and final preparation of this document?
No, I contributed to it, but Mr. Clouver was responsible for compiling and-
And who does he, who does Mr. Clouver report to?
He's a consultant for Villanova University.
So who's he, who's the person who is his report, reports to you or to the president?
Commissioner Booker, why don't we do this? Instead of-
No, 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 again.
But, but-
No, let's, let's, John, I'm trying to establish who, who at Villanova was responsible, who hired the people and ultimately is responsible for this document?
But when you're done that, you have a question about something substantively in there. So let's, if Mr. Kowalski can't ask, answer that, let's, when we come back, put your questions out there that you want answered. Substantive questions.
The question is, who is responsible for this document? That's the question.
Mr. Caneley-
It's not a consultant.
Villanova University is responsible for the document. They're, they're the ones, the consultant prepared the document, comprised it. Obviously Villanova paid the consultant to do so.
And did Mr. Clouver sort of pull it all together? Was he the main person that-
He was the person who pulled it together. Now, if you're talking about economics, though, Rich, that obviously was by Lee Wong, who's testified previously here today, if you're talking about economics.
So if there's specific parts of that, you know, let's finish, again, Mr. Kowalski, if there's specific questions about-
Here's my, the question, the issue is, the university is not responsible for this document. A person at the university, is it the president? Is it Mr. Kowalski? Is it someone else? Somebody was in charge of preparation and was charged with that responsibility, either the president directly.
Rich, I think I've explained that. I think the president had nothing to do with this.
Who, who at Villanova? It's not Villanova, Villanova's not a person.
Villanova hires consultants.
Villanova's not a person. Who, who is the person? Who's the manager? Who is responsible?
I don't understand. Villanova hires consultants. The consultants put together the, this statement. So I'm not certain what-
This is unresponsive.
Who was, who was the person that hired the consultant?
Villanova.
I know, but somebody at Villanova said, when he interviewed people and said, this is the guy we're hiring, you know?
Bob. Bob Moreau. Bob Moreau, probably, I don't know if he hired him, but he was-
Yeah. Let's, let's take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back, and we'll try to get to the bottom of this when we come back. Let's, let's take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back, and we'll try to get to the bottom of this when we come back. Mr. Kowalski, still sitting here. I don't know if we're done with him or not. Um, I, I... Is there any other commissioner questions? I think we were done with commissioner questions. Mr. Caneelya, do you have any questions for Mr. Kowalski?
I do not.
Okay. So, Mr. Bola?
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Further, members of the Board of Commissioners, as an accommodation to the residents to preserve Radnor and other residential neighbors, I had agreed to call Michelle Adams, a stormwater engineer whom they have an affiliation with. And I have premarked her report dated July 28, 2014, as Exhibit T4. I've sent a copy of that to Ms. Caneelya, and I'm going to hand that out to the board now. Okay, great. And then I'll, I will make available for members of the public extra copies here of piece one. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bola.
Thank, you're welcome.
Yes. Michelle C. Adams, Michelle with one L, ADAMS.
And Ms. Adams, how are you employed?
I am the owner of an engineering consulting firm in Phoenixville that specializes in water and stormwater issues.
All right. And what's your, what's the extent of your education? Where'd you get your undergraduate in college and postgraduate degrees, if any?
I have an undergraduate civil engineering degree from Penn State and did graduate work at Drexel and Villanova.
Okay. And have you testified as a stormwater engineer in jurisdictions in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Including the five-county Philadelphia area?
Yes.
And you've been qualified to testify as an expert in stormwater engineering? Have you testified before any other federal boards or agencies where you've been so qualified?
The Environmental Hearing Board, state and county courts, federal court.
Right. And did you analyze the, at the request of some of the neighbors and residents here, did you analyze the ordinances of Radnor Township with regard to stormwater management and the stormwater management report that's been submitted as part of this application?
I did, to the extent that information was submitted.
All right. And you'd like to issue your report and a statement to the commissioners at this time. Is that correct?
I would.
Please do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bola. In my memo, I basically talk about, as, the profession in stormwater has evolved and changed. What's really come to the top is the idea of volume management. For years, we've been building detention basins and worrying about flow rates, but the importance of how much water, and Mr. Tweedy spoke to this, has really come to the forefront in addressing water quality, stream bank erosion, and downstream flooding. So much so that, back in 2009, the federal government EPA issued guidelines for all new federal facilities, setting new standards for stormwater, basically saying that you need to hold the small storms. And the way the feds defined it is the 95th percentile. And that sounds confusing, but what that means is when it rains, 95% of the time, it rains that much or less. So, we get a lot of small rainfall events. So, instead of talking about the two-year, 100-year that we're used to talking about, the feds are talking about the 95th percentile. So, around here, that's about 1.6 to 1.8 inches. 95% of the time when it rains, it rains that much or less. So, if you were a federal facility, you'd have to adhere to the federal requirements to hold that water, infiltrate it, reuse it, evaporate it with your vegetation. That's the federal criteria. And it's so important that it's become the basis of regulations in places like Philadelphia, DC, other cities, you know, around the country. And in the city of Philadelphia, no matter who you are, when you redevelop, you have to manage that first inch and a half or whatever your criteria is for all your development area, regardless of what was there before. And the feds are saying it doesn't matter if it was a forest or a parking lot before you built, after you build, that's what we need to worry about, because that's the only way we'll ever solve flooding and water quality issues downstreams. And so, it's so important that it's, in Philadelphia, they have an ordinance for the one-inch requirement. So, places like Drexel and Villanova and University of Pennsylvania have to. They are required to hold their water for that first rainfall. It's not, they have to try. They must do it. And it's remarkable, when you have that requirement, what happens? Recently, at the University of Pennsylvania, they did a new quad and plaza next to the Palestra and Franklin Field, where it used to be tennis courts, and they created a student quad on top of those old tennis courts. And they've been measuring it for the past year. And it's working so well that in all the rainfall events we've had, no water has left the site. It's this giant sponge. So, it really is doable to hold your water even in a constrained environment. And this idea of holding your water is so important that EPA recently gave research funding to five major universities of a million dollars apiece, including Villanova. Villanova got a million dollars for next-generation volume reduction, green infrastructure, stormwater control measures in support of Philadelphia's Green City Clean Waters Initiative. Villanova is a tremendous resource, not just to the region, but to the country in terms of the research Dr. Traver and his department are doing for stormwater management and green infrastructure. And that's been recognized by EPA. And so, what the Friends to Preserve Radnor are really asking is that, as a condition of this approval, that the Villanova be required, not just try, but to fill that gap in the existing Radnor ordinance. Because the ordinance doesn't require, it says you can try to infiltrate, and if you can't, you can't. But the Friends are asking that it be a condition, that volume management be part of the Villanova approval for this zoning. And we are asking for the inch and a half, because that's consistent with the EPA federal requirements. The, Mr. Tweedy referenced the Maryland method, and I had referenced that in my memo. That's really meant as a give-back or an assist to Villanova, if you will. The state of Maryland recognized that when you manage volume, it really reduces flooding. So, you should get credit in your flooding calculations. Mr. Tweedy is correct. That's not part of Pennsylvania's requirements or regulations. But they're aware of it, and you can ask Pennsylvania DEP. I have asked Pennsylvania DEP to allow me to use that method on projects, and they've granted it. So, it's a discussion that's open. But that was meant as a suggestion in Villanova's benefit, so they can reduce their detention and do more green infrastructure volume management. So, in summary, really what the Friends are asking is that volume management for an inch and a half be a requirement, a condition of this approval. And I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Let's, Mr. Caneelya, questions?
Sure, just a couple. Ms. Adams, you were not retained by Radnor Township to present this evening?
No, no.
Were you, who were you retained by?
Friends to Preserve Radnor and the Delaware Riverkeeper Network.
Okay, because I noticed the letter is addressed to Maya Van Ross.
Yes.
Now, would you agree that a reduction in impervious coverage on a site does reduce stormwater volume?
Absolutely. It definitely gets better with a reduction, but it's not good enough to help the downstream problems that already exist from the existing parking lots and development.
And you would agree also, obviously, that the proposed redevelopment, even without stormwater management, would reduce runoff?
Absolutely. But is that good enough to solve the problems of downstream, especially with Villanova, with so many resources available to do good design?
Also, does conversion of asphalt parking surfaces to rooftops and pedestrian walkways improve water quality of runoff from a site?
Yes, it can.
And you understand Villanova is doing that as well, correct?
It's all, it's, there's no question that this is an improvement over the parking lots. Is it enough of an improvement is the issue?
Sure. You had mentioned Villanova, or Philadelphia, actually, you had first mentioned that Philadelphia is requiring Villanova, and I think you misspoke.
I probably misspoke. Thank you for that.
I think you said University of Pennsylvania and Drexel.
Temple, all of the, all of the city universities.
And you had said, though, that the Philadelphia requirement's 1.5 inches. Isn't it, in fact, currently 1 inch?
It's 1 inch now.
And they're revealing it to see if it can go to 1.5.
Correct.
And you agree also that Villanova's proposal complies with Radnor Township's stormwater code?
From the information provided, it does, but the code falls short of meeting goals to reduce flooding, improve water quality, and reduce stream bank erosion downstream.
And even what Villanova is proposing actually is more than what Radnor code requires?
That I don't know. That I could not see from, from the, what was submitted. Mr. Tweedy spoke to that tonight of an intent, but that was not what was presented.
And you would agree also, of course, that this is all a matter for land development?
It is, but if the rules aren't there, it's too easy to wiggle out of them during land development. There's nothing to hold you to them during land development.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any of the other parties have any questions for, well...
Can I have one question?
No, because this is your witness. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for this witness? Okay.
Thank you very much.
The board, don't go away. Does the board have any questions?
What's the difference between the 1-inch requirement that you said the city schools have to do and the 1-inch requirement that Villanova indicated it's infiltrating?
1 inch is 1 inch. There really isn't a difference.
So, I, I heard two different things then. I heard you say that they are underperforming relative to what, you know, the city schools are doing, but then I heard you say that it's the same, it's the same 1-inch requirement.
Well, Villanova indicated that it's their intent to try to do this, and that's required under your ordinance. They're required to try and do groundwater recharge. But your ordinance allows them to not do volume management if groundwater recharge isn't viable. They are not required to look to other measures like green roofs and cisterns and vegetative systems.
I mean, my understanding is that's a waiver that would be in the land development process, that the code, the code says you have to infiltrate the 1-inch.
Right.
You can get a waiver from it, but it's...
Yes, it's a waiver, correct.
Okay.
1 inch for groundwater recharge. If you can't do groundwater recharge, the ordinance only requires you to look at groundwater recharge. It doesn't require you to look at any other methods for volume management. And there are other methods through vegetation and green roofs, through cisterns to reuse the water to flush the toilets or to irrigate the landscape. And those are the methods that are being used at places like the University of Pennsylvania, where they can't infiltrate.
Right. Now, my sense is, though, that the use of those, the allowance of those mechanisms to, to take credit for volume reduction would actually make the ordinance softer rather than stricter. Because what would hap, well, what would happen is that if, if you, if you are allowed to take credit for transpiring, then you have less that you have to infiltrate. And, and if, if the requirement is entirely to infiltrate it, the transportation's going to come anyway as a result of the rain gardens and those things.
And the evapotranspiration is a good thing. That's one of the things that should be addressed in your ordinance. Because that's exactly what Dr. Traver and his, his faculty are studying, the benefits of that evaporation. It's a good thing to manage volume that way.
Yes, very much so.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, your memo says that the ordinance does not require the township to, or does not require that volume be detained. It's really just the issue of volume. I'm assuming you're, that's what you're saying.
Right.
Stormwater does not, stormwater ordinance does not, not underline specifically, address the issue of volume runoff. But the 1-inch specifically is the issue of volume runoff, isn't it?
No, it's groundwater recharge, which is one way to do volume.
Yes. So, so, so there is, there is mandatory runoff control, because you have to infiltrate that 1-inch.
But if you can't infiltrate, you don't have to do volume control.
Right. Well, then you have to get a waiver from the Board of Commissioners to not infiltrate.
By comparison, other ordinances, like the city of Philadelphia, the state of Maryland, Washington DC, you have to do volume control. It doesn't say groundwater recharge. It says volume through any measure available to you. And that's the difference.
Groundwater recharge is volume control.
It is one way to do volume control.
But it's a, so it is under, there is never a time in which groundwater recharge is not volume control. So, I just don't think that that, that statement is accurate. I don't think the statement that we're not requiring runoff control is accurate. I mean, I think it could be required differently, but I think... I mean, I think it, it could be required differently, but I think we are requiring it.
You're requiring it partially. I would agree, it's a partial requirement.
And then also, isn't there a, the before and after, the mechanism of our ordinance has a before and after?
Right.
And you have to infiltrate the difference of a particular storm, meaning that the ordinance specifies the storm?
Right.
And that volume for that storm has to be controlled.
And there will be no, there will be no difference on this site because they're removing pavement, they're making things better already by removing pavement.
So the volume control comes automatically from the impervious?
Things definitely get better by turning this from parking lots into dorms and plazas. Is it good enough to solve downstream problems? Not by federal standards.
Right. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board questions?
I just have one or two. The storm, I, I don't have enough background in this to understand it fully, but I just need some clarity around the difference between 1-inch groundwater recharge versus 1.5-inch volume management and the benefits of those two. Could you just describe that briefly?
Sure, and it's, it's, this is pretty dry stuff, no pun intended, but, for instance, in the city of Philadelphia, you're required to do volume management. At the University of Pennsylvania, they could not infiltrate, they were on 30 feet of urban rubble. So they had to find other things they could do. So they built essentially a green roof on top of former tennis courts, they have cisterns that hold and reuse the water. Those things all provide volume management. Groundwater recharge is one way to provide volume management, but it's just, it's just groundwater recharge, and your ordinance says if you can't do groundwater recharge, you can get a waiver, and then no other volume management is required. Nothing else is required if you can't do groundwater recharge. So that's a gap in your ordinance.
And I believe you made a statement that downs, that existing downstream problems are, occur as a result of the existing parking lot. So existing, I'm paraphrasing, the existing parking lot impervious could lead to downstream problems, maybe that's more fair.
It undoubtedly contributes to the amount of water that causes flooding, stream bank erosion, and water quality. It's part of, part of the problem.
So, so as part of this plan, if they could do more, more than is required, we might see some improvement in downstream conditions?
Yes, and Villanova certainly has the knowledge and the resources. They're, they're a center in the country for this kind of research, so we have the resource.
The, the site at Villanova has, directly adjacent to the planned parking garage and the Performing Arts Center, there is a field called Pike Field. It's a fairly large field. Would that field be able to be, play a role in this stormwater treatment?
I would not know without the site details, but I can tell you at places like Purdue University, they put two, two giant stormwater storage infiltration beds under their football practice fields, University of North Carolina. So it's certainly something that's very doable in athletic fields at universities, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other board questions?
Thank you very much.
Ms. Adams, you did not do a downstream study?
No.
You heard Mr. Tweedy testify as to his downstream study. Do you have any reason to, to disapprove of what his study indicated?
No reason to approve or disapprove, I haven't reviewed it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to mark the, the letter that we received.
T4, I think.
I premarked a T4, Mr. Wright.
Oh, you did, okay. I missed that, thank you. All right, and that is the July 28, 2014 memo from Michelle Adams to Maya Van Rossen. Okay? Next witness.
Thank you, Amy Kaminski, please.
Amy B. Kaminski, K-A-M-I-N-S-K-I.
Amy, what is your occupation and business address?
I'm a transportation engineer. I work for Gilmore and Associates. My address is 65 East Butler Avenue, Suite 100, New Britain Township, oh, strike that, not township, New Britain, PA, 18901.
Thank you, and what's your college background?
I have a BS in civil engineering.
And do you have any postgraduate degrees?
No, I do not.
Great. How long have you been employed as a traffic engineer?
I took 14, probably about 16 years.
All right, and have you, and are you retained by Radnor Township as its traffic engineer?
Yes, I am.
How long have you served Radnor Township in that capacity?
Since 2012.
Right, and in that capacity, are you familiar with, have you become familiar with the ordinances of the township and the area of the township and its intersections generally, and those relative to this application specifically?
I have.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to review the various reports that have been submitted by Villanova in connection with this matter, including the two traffic impact studies, rather, the first traffic impact study and its amendment, and also a special event traffic plan?
I have.
Okay. You issued, did you not, what has been marked and received into evidence as exhibit T3, which was your review of the revised traffic impact study, correct?
Correct.
And with regard to the special event traffic management program that has been testified thus far, is it safe to say that you agree that Villanova and its professionals and you, on behalf of the township, have been engaged in meaningful back and forth in the development of that plan?
Yes, we have.
And are you confident that that, that that plan will be something that will be able to be accomplished by land development?
I do believe that would be true, yes.
Then with regard to the traffic, the revised traffic impact study, and I'm sorry, I forget the name of the, or the designation of the exhibit, and, and your letter T3, there have come to the fore basically just two or three, well, strike that. The, the larger portion of your T3 review letter deals with issues involved between you and the Villanova's traffic engineer that are, that require requests and supply of information and so on and so forth. Is that right?
Yes, that is true.
All right. And are you satisfied thus far with the progress that you have received and the cooperation you've received from Villanova in response to your requests?
Yes, I am.
And do you expect that they will continue to be developed, there will be additional requests and additional replies as land development proceeds if conditional use is approved?
Yes.
Okay. Now, however, there have been a couple of striking disagreements between yourself and the traffic engineer employed by Villanova with regard to a couple of issues, correct?
That's true.
All right. And let's focus right away on the, on the first one, which is the proposed right-hand turn lane off of Lancaster Avenue eastbound onto Eithan Avenue.
Okay.
As a result of the reports that you've received regarding this intersection and your own knowledge, did you take any action?
Action in what way?
With regard to that intersection, did you examine the intersection and perform any analysis of it?
I, I did. I had asked for a turn lane warrant analysis, and the testimony from Mr. Tavani indicated that according to the strikeoff letter, that wasn't necessary. The strikeoff letter being what PennDOT requires for a traffic impact study. However, I agree, I disagree with his interpretation of that strikeoff letter. So I took the information that he provided in his traffic study and performed the turn lane warrant analysis myself.
All right, I'm going to show you what I am marking as T5. Can you identify that, please?
Yes. T5 would be utilizing spreadsheets that are prepared by PennDOT and looking at the traffic volumes and the percent of trucks working through the intersection and the turn lanes or the volume of traffic on the roadway. We, you run through a warning analysis to determine whether or not that turn lane should be included in the roadway, if the roadway would benefit from what we call a dedicated right turn lane. And the information indicated that it was warranted and, and the minimum length should be 150 feet for the roadway.
Now, prior to running this warrant analysis, you weren't sure about this right turn lane, is that correct?
That would be correct.
All right. And explain to the Board of Commissioners why that was the case and why you are now sure.
Originally, when we started talking about the right turn lane, we, the concern came from Radnor Township Police Department. They were concerned that during special events, there would be no facilities to shut off right turns for eastbound movement onto Eithan Avenue to get into the parking garage. And the concern was that if you had those right-turning vehicles in the through movement, you would effectively be pinching off traffic when they came upon police officers trying to direct them and turn them away. So I understood his need, that would be Mr. Matt, or, I think it's...
Officer Mattis.
Officer Mattis. I was understanding his concern about handling the special event traffic volumes. So that was one thing to consider, but then, on the other hand, we had to consider that we would be widening the roadway by an additional 12 feet, which would add what we thought would be more time to that pedestrian scramble that occurs at Eithan and Lancaster Avenue. And that was something that we didn't want to do, was to delay traffic on Lancaster Avenue every time that the pedestrian push button was pushed for any of those approaches.
So what did your analysis reveal?
So I did a second analysis to look at what the timings would be like if we extended, if we constructed that turn lane, what it would do to the ped timing at the intersection.
All right, and I'm asking you to look at what I have marked as T6. Could you identify that, please, for the Board of Commissioners?
T6 is utilizing the PennDOT traffic signal clearances. It's basically how we determine how much green time, yellow time, red time, we would provide at a signalized intersection. And for this particular spreadsheet, we look at the crossing distances on the different approaches, and we look at the walking speed for the typical pedestrian, which is a standard of 3.5 feet per second in the state of Pennsylvania. And based on that information, we develop how much time it would take a pedestrian to walk across the road and to clear out of the road once they've stepped off the curb by stepping up on the receiving curb. So the original signal permit plan, which dictates how that intersection operates right now, the timings at that intersection are based on the old 4 feet per second, which was the old standard. So now that we would be coming in and revising the timing at the intersection and changing it to the 3.5 feet per second, that would add additional time for the pedestrian movement at the intersection.
In other words, it would reduce the time necessary for the crossing?
It would actually increase the time because a slower speed moving from 4 feet per second to 3 and 1/2 feet per second would require us to increase the timing to cross Lancaster Avenue.
Okay.
So, looking at the information that we have here, right now, the crossing distance for the east leg is 74 feet.
And you're referring to T6 at this time?
Correct, I am. And the crossing for the west leg of, on Lancaster Avenue is 61 feet. So if we add 12 feet for that right-turning lane, we are still less than the distance that it takes you to cross on the east leg.
Okay.
Therefore, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The east leg is the controlling factor for what determines what our pedestrian timing is to cross that road. So adding that right turn lane has no effect on adding additional timing to that intersection.
Okay, now, what are you assuming the width of that right-hand turn lane to be?
12 feet.
All right. Earlier, we heard in testimony from the applicant's engineer that the existing 10-foot wide lanes would have, might have to be expanded by PennDOT's rules to 12 feet. Do you recall that?
I, I do recall that testimony.
All right, how does that interplay with what you're testifying to now?
It wouldn't affect it at all because you would still have to add that additional 12 feet on the east leg, and it would still become the controlling leg. It has to do with the fact that there's a, the Lancaster meets Eithan at a skew, and the western side has less crossing distance than the eastern leg does. If you look at the graphic that's up there right now, you can clearly see that the western leg has a shorter distance from curb to curb compared to the eastern one, and it's because of the skew that Eithan comes in at Lancaster Avenue.
Okay, so that if, assume for a moment, just for the sake of this question, that you wouldn't have to widen any lanes and that you were putting in a new 12-foot lane. That 12-foot lane is still less than, with the addition, less than the distance on the opposing or opposite intersection, correct?
The east leg, yes. That is still less, it's a foot shorter than the east leg, yes.
Okay. And even if you do have to add 2 feet to each lane, you have to add 2 feet to each lane, both east and west, correct?
Yes, you would have to make sure that the, that the receiving lane would be just as wide, and you would have continuous flow through the intersection. So any widening that you would do on the east side, you would also have to do on the west side, especially since both, all the parcels on the corner are owned by Villanova University. So PennDOT would require them to do a consistent alignment through the intersection.
All right, so then, how does this impact your determination about the, the detriment that had been posited by the traffic engineer for Villanova of the wider distance to be crossed?
Do you mean the increased?
Yes.
Timing?
The increased timing.
I disagree with his assessment that, and I don't believe that he brought out any numerical values, it was just a, in consideration of widening. If you weren't looking at the intersection and you didn't go through all the steps that we did here, you wouldn't know that there wouldn't be an increase in timing because of the east, because he wouldn't be aware that the western is actually, or the, I'm sorry, I have that backwards. The eastern leg is actually the controlling factor for the timing for the pedestrians.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to offer T5 and T6, just so that I can get these before the Commissioners, unless there's any objection.
Do you have a copy of neighbors that might?
I do, I have extra copies, and I'll put them on this chair where I'm placing all of the township's exhibits.
John, here's T5. These are T5. I have a few extra copies up here. Oh, we're missing a Commissioner. All right, there we go. T6.
That's right, T6.
Okay.
And there are now extra copies on the chair. Now, Amy, as I look at T5 first, I get confused. What does T5 do? What does it say?
T5 is a worksheet that actually goes through the calculations so that you don't have to do them by hand. And it's set up by PennDOT, and it's used by traffic engineers in the state of Pennsylvania when they're submitting timings to PennDOT for review and to allow timings to be changed at an intersection. We need to make sure every time we submit a signal permit plan, that there's enough clearance time for pedestrians to step off the crosswalk and cross the entire roadway before taking access on the other side of the road. So this is the analysis worksheet that we would provide to PennDOT when we were making a signal permit change. And it helps us to determine, oh, I'm sorry, this is the turn lane warrant analysis.
Right, T5.
I'm sorry, yes. This actually does get submitted to PennDOT also, and it's determining what the, if, if a turn lane is required, and what the length would be based on the traffic volumes that are there. So this analysis that you're looking at is for the PM peak hour.
And what does it tell you? Where does it tell you that this right turn lane is, is warranted?
If you look under the turn lane warrant findings, under the right-hand column where it says right turn lane warrant findings, it says Figure 11, and the warranting is met for this particular intersection. And if you move to the second page of T5, it's the graphic that shows you what the traffic volumes are and what the traffic volumes for the right-turning movement are. So 116 right turns are made at that intersection, and the advancing, meaning the vehicles that are moving with that traffic, equals 1,116. You graph that for, on there, and it determines whether or not a right turn lane is warranted.
All right, and is your opinion, after conducting this analysis in consultation with the PennDOT requirements, that the right-hand turn lane is warranted?
That would be correct.
Now...
T6.
Okay, yeah, T6, again... Okay, yeah, T6, again, looks pretty Greek to me. What, would you describe what that is?
On the left-hand side, it talks about the, the walking interval, the pedestrian change interval. The walk interval is the minimum amount of time that we provide to pedestrians to begin the walk across. At lower pedestrian volume intersections, we would possibly take that down to a minimum of four seconds. For this intersection, there's a higher number of pedestrians that we anticipate at the intersection, so she, we would typically take that up to a minimum of seven to nine seconds. I don't think I would anticipate having that less than seven seconds. And then, the next item is the pedestrian change interval, and that would be the amount of time it takes a pedestrian during that walk phase, now it's moving to that flashing hand phase. Once they step off and the flashing hand starts, they need to be able to completely clear that roadway, and it's the amount of time that it takes them to move from that, that curb to the receiving curb. And then, looking down at the calculations, you can see that we have an L, which is the length, that's the walking distance from curb to curb. T sub W would be the time that we would provide to the pedestrian to walk. T sub PC is the ped clearance, that's basically when the flashing hand comes up when you come to an intersection. And then, the combination of the two, the, the minimum is the amount that PENDOT would allow you to put in an intersection, and that would be based on that four-second minimum that we had, I had talked about previously.
So, what's the existing ped crossing time now, do you know?
It presently is 24 seconds for the T sub W and T sub PC. So, that would be the time for the initial walk phase and then the ped clearance, so it's 24 seconds.
And what would you anticipate if the, if the right-hand turn lane were added and an additional 12 feet were added, would that change that significantly?
Well, that 24 second that's on the permit plan right now is based on the old ped timing walk speed of four feet per second. So, even if we did nothing at intersection or, but decided to re-time it, we would be required to bring it into new compliance, which would put it at the three and a half feet per second walking speed. So, we would be required to put in a minimum of 27 seconds. Based on this information, that would be using a four-second for the initial walk speed, or walk timing. But it would probably be 30 seconds if we were to revise it today. Without doing anything else at intersection, we would be required to bring it up to 30 seconds.
All right, and that 30 seconds would apply whether or not the right-hand turn lane was installed, am I correct?
That's correct.
Because of the disparity in the length of the eastern intersection?
You've got it, that's correct.
Wow. Okay. Now, you had asked-
Wait, which one?
The email, oh, no.
No?
Yeah, the email today that we-
You have it.
Bear with me, folks.
Well, he's looking at that. In this study, did you consider the other two right-hand turn lanes, or you didn't think of them at all?
What other two right turn lanes?
The ones that are proposed for this development.
There's actually only one that, that's in question right now, and that would be the eastbound approach on Lancaster at Ithyn.
I understand that, but you said there's 116 turns, you were studying, there were 116 turns that met the warrants, but if this development is built with two right-hand turns further down the street, does that change it in any way?
No.
Are we having questions now from the Board?
Just keep quiet.
That operates separately from this, and the traffic study took into consideration right turns down at Church Walk and right turns at the garage. So, this is based on the information that was provided in Exhibit A18.
Yes, all right, I haven't found what I was looking for, but I can wing it anyhow. You prepared what I have just marked as T7, is that correct?
Correct.
What is that?
This is basically putting all the information together that we just discussed in the last few minutes, just for better clarity. What was this, T7?
T7.
Okay. So, I'm spelling out what the crossing distances are, what the minimum ped time would be based on PENDOT's Publication 149, which is how we determine what our pedestrian timings are. And then, I would recommend that we move to a minimum seven second for the initial walking period, because we have so many pedestrians on that corner, we want to make sure that those pedestrians get across the street, so that they're served in the first activation. And the last column just discusses that right now, we're sitting at 24 seconds on the plan, and if we did nothing to this intersection but changed the timing or made these improvements on the corner, we would be required to put in 30 seconds for the, the timing for the pedestrians at the intersection. And then, the last column, if we construct that eastbound right turn lane and we run the pedestrian timings with the right turn lane on the west approach, we still only show 29 seconds on that approach. So, the controlling leg is still the east leg, so it's just providing clarity.
All right, at this time, I offer T7.
Any objection?
And then, Sheet 2 to T7, I've done a small window of the signal permit plan right now, so you could get an idea of how we measure these things and what the distances are.
am I correct?
I don't believe that I've put in any information that's been submitted, but previous discussions with Villanova University, this has been an ongoing project for the last several years, we've discussed the possibility of doing a traffic adaptive system on Lancaster Avenue.
All right, what is a traffic adaptive system?
A traffic adaptive system is a signal controller product that is installed in the controller cabinet and allows the, all the intersections that are part of the system to fluctuate with traffic volumes as they fluctuate in a dynamic way. Right now, the, what is installed in all the signals in Radnor Township are what we would call static systems. They operate between the green, yellow, and red cycles, and although it responds to vehicles that come and are detected at the intersection, it doesn't have the intelligence, so to speak, to be able to react in real time to the traffic volumes as they fluctuate. So, in a situation like Villanova with special events, if we are going to have vehicles moving down Lancaster Avenue, and then we turn on a dynamic messaging sign that tells them to reroute into Spring Mill Road and make a left, go to those garages that are back there, we wouldn't have possibly the timing at that intersection to allow those vehicles to move efficiently through the intersection. However, a traffic adaptive system isn't controlled by the constraints that your systems currently have. They can react in real time to the traffic volumes as they occur and process those based on information it's receiving from intersections that are nearby.
All right, it may be apparent, but state what that means to the traffic.
It means that you're going to have reduction in delay, your traffic speeds are going to be higher, you're going to reduce your emissions from vehicles, because they're less likely to be sitting stagnant at an intersection, and you're going to be able to change the green time at intersections based on the needs of the intersection as they occur.
So, what's your recommendation in this regard, Amy?
I, I would recommend that a traffic adaptive system be installed on Lancaster Avenue to help out with the traffic volumes, particularly during the special events, is where we would see the biggest benefit.
And at what specific intersections on Lancaster Avenue?
I think it would be beneficial for them to be installed, starting at Spring Mill and continuing down to Connie Line Road, which would be six intersections. I believe that there, the township is looking into doing a traffic adaptive system at Villanova Center, and that could also be included in this intersection, in the intersections that I just discussed. So, it would provide seven intersections along Lancaster Avenue to work off or operate off the traffic adaptive system.
Okay. Now, the other issue that remains a point of disagreement is the four-way stop intersection proposed at Ithyn and the entrance to the parking garage, is that correct?
That is correct.
The applicant proposing it to be a four-way stop, correct?
Correct.
Do you agree with that proposal, and if not, why not?
I don't agree with that proposal. I don't think that, that it's warranted at this location. It's, it's not, it's very unusual to even consider stop controlling a major thoroughfare with two private driveways, which is what those garage accesses are. It's more important to get the traffic volumes to be able to move through Ithyn Avenue efficiently, and if you put a stop control there, you're not going to have that efficient movement.
All right, so the, what's the disadvantage or detriment of the four-way stop?
There's a couple things with, with having the four-way stop.
Yes.
Okay. We would be making all vehicles stop on Ithyn Avenue, and it should be a free flow through that area. That's, that's the biggest detriment right there.
I'm sorry, this is at, at the intersection of Ithyn with, with what?
With both parking garages.
To, and, and going into the garage and coming out of the garage?
Correct.
Okay.
So, that you're proposing a two-way stop?
Yes.
Correct?
That would be correct.
And that would be for those exiting the parking garage or the drive behind the parking areas, behind the doors?
Correct.
Why strike that? What leads you to believe that there won't be such a current of traffic on Ithyn that would prohibit people getting out from the parking garage?
I don't, if memory serves me, when I was reading Exhibit A18, there was not much difference between an all-way stop control and a two-way stop control as far as delays and level of service operation for the intersection. And I, in my opinion, it is more important to keep traffic moving on Ithyn Avenue than it is to provide a private driveway access, direct access to Ithyn Avenue.
And of course, in special events, that intersection and access would be controlled by guards or police officers or some, something like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe that there was some concern that pedestrians may have trouble crossing between the parking garage and behind the housing units. However, I think that if there was some kind of a pedestrian-activated flashing warning device, meaning as pedestrians come up, they could hit the button, and they would, we would stop vehicles near the intersection, back enough, that the pedestrians could cross at that location, that that would provide a safer, convenient way for pedestrians to cross the roadway while not delaying vehicles every time they come through that intersection on Ithyn Avenue.
And that, and that device can be controlled and regulated also, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The other concern that I have is that if we install this all-way stop control and we start having spillover effect, meaning that the vehicles are not being able to process through that stop control efficiently, we could end up with problems at the signalized intersection, and that's something that we should avoid. And once you install an all-way stop control, it's very difficult to remove those, because motorists become conditioned to those types of things, and it's just not something that you should consider in these types of situations. So, I would prefer to go with the two-way stop control, and, and if it becomes a problem, we could reinvestigate it at another date.
Very good. Is there anything I missed?
I don't think so.
All right, thank you. Crossing examiner.
I just have a couple on cross-exam, and just mention to the Board, I may have to recall Mr. Tivani on rebuttal when the township's done with their case, possibly, probably would be quick, you know, hopefully, if we did it that way. Just a couple. Amy, and I'm sorry, I should call you Ms. Kaminski, but the benefit of the right turn lane, is it really just for special events?
No, it's not just for special events. It helps vehicles get through the intersection more efficiently during normal operations.
But really, the, the initial thought here was to establish a right turn lane for special events?
It was brought to my attention that the police department would prefer to have a right turn lane there for the special events. However, during the normal process of doing such a significant improvement at, at this intersection, one of the things we would be looking at is turn lane warrants and whether left turn lane should be extended, right turn lane should be constructed, so it came up during that discussion.
Okay, and just one other, that with the installation of the right turn lane, the timing, the pedestrian timing on the light would go from 24 seconds to 30 seconds, is that accurate?
Could you restate, could you restate that, because I think that's incorrect?
Okay. Currently, the timing on the light is, for the pedestrian walk, is 24 seconds, is that accurate?
That's correct.
All right. And with the installation of the right turn lane, what would be the longest timing that would be required for the pedestrian scramble for the light?
Regardless of whether that right turn lane is constructed or not, the intersection will be required to show 30 seconds for the pedestrian movement.
Okay.
So, it has nothing to do with the right turn lane.
That's all I have for now.
Okay.
Any questions from any of the parties about the testimony?
Oh, I do have- I'm sorry, because she had meant, may I continue?
Go ahead.
Ms. Kaminski, you mentioned the traffic adaptive system, and you mentioned seven intersections, or did you include the-
No, no.
Six is one.
It would, it would provide seven intersections with traffic adaptive system-
Okay, because it's already doing one. Now, those six intersections that you were requesting Villanova be responsible for, actually only two of those are on Villanova's campus, is that right?
That would be true, yes.
So, you're asking for them to put a traffic adaptive system on four additional intersections as well?
I am, and the reasoning would be because during special events, there would be turning movements that would be occurring at Spring Mill Road that would not be part of the timing plan that's out there presently.
Okay, and, so Spring Mill, and then you're asking for County Line and Lowry's, I assume?
Lowry's, correct.
Okay, and they're off-campus, and they-
I believe there's another one. I can't remember the name of it, I'm sorry.
Oh, Airdale.
That's it.
Great. But those three really, have you been out there for special events to see what's going on at those three intersections?
No, I have not.
Okay. So, are you aware whether they generate much traffic backup at those three intersections during special events?
No, I'm not aware.
Okay. That's all.
Yes, Ms. Kaminski, I'm also going to refer to, and I'm assuming you reviewed Mr. Tivani's entire report.
Unfortunately, yes.
Unfortunately, okay. So, I am also going to refer, as I did to Mr. Kowalski, to the Appendix G Trip Generation, the line graph presented that indicates that Villanova's student population has remained, I quote, "consistent and flat."
If I could see the graphic, I could let you know my opinion on that. I thought I folded the page, I did.
Did you find it?
I did find it. Yes, it appears the information that was included in the Traffic Impact-
Yes, it appears the information that was included in the traffic impact study, uh, is relatively flat.
Okay. Um, now, you, of course, in this situation, just evaluated his study. You didn't conduct your own study, correct?
Uh, with, with the exception of the information I just presented, I did not do my own study.
Okay. Um, have you, in your profession, uh, for other organizations, institutions, been in his position and, um, conducted a, a study from scratch, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, if you were, uh, assigned to do this for an institution, and let's say an educational institution, and during the course of your research, uh, you discovered that over the course of 15 years, uh, their total population had increased from 9,496 to 10,697.
I'm going to object, there's no evidence like that in the record.
I would like to, um...
I think it's a hypothetical. Don't argue.
It's a hypothetical.
Objection's overruled. It's a hypothetical.
It's a hypothetical.
Question for the expert witness.
A hypothetical, if, if, over the course of 15 years, the population increased from 9,496 to 10,697, would you characterize that as flat or an increase?
Wait, I'm sorry. You're saying if, if I was hired by a client?
If you were working for, yes, a client, an educational institution.
Okay.
And you were assigned to do a traffic study, and during the course of that study, you learned that over the course of 15 years, their total population had increased from 9,496 to 10,697, would you characterize that as flat or an increase?
Well, you're telling me there's an increase, so if you were my client and you told me that there were, you know, over a thousand more, then I would have to take...
1,200, yes.
I would take your word at what you told me and present the information based on what I was provided.
All right. Um, so in that situation, if you discovered that, would you...
Wait, wait, wait. To be clarified, you're saying I discovered it. However, you're trying, I do not...
Or this were provided to you by the institution.
Let's, let's, let's clarify this. All you're asking is, is that an increase from one number to another number? It's 1,200.
That's my first question. My second question is, if you learned of, if you learned of this increase...
From my client.
Yes. Would you consider that information in your traffic analysis study?
If, if that is part of my analysis, anything that I'm provided by my client, I would be required to report to it, and as part of my ethics, I am required to be truthful in the information that I provide in a TIS.
And could an increase such as that potentially impact the, the traffic?
Could an increase in the number of students increase the traffic?
Yes.
Is that what the question is?
Yes.
Yes, it could.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, I don't have any further questions. I have, uh, provided some data to Mr. Bola, Mr. Bola, that I will also provide, uh, to Mr. Canilia. Uh, I understand that, uh, the registrar, uh, would be the one to weigh in on this from, uh, Mr. Kowalski's previous testimony.
What did he show?
Yes.
Well, you provided it to Mr. Bola, provided to Mr. Canilia.
I have not received anything.
And then you want to present that document, not to I, let them look at it.
And I'm happy to hear, actually, directly from the registrar if they have, uh, corrections or comments on the data.
Okay. Well, you worked that out with the two attorneys, and then if you want to come back...
I've already given Mr. Bola the information.
On the 23rd and present that, then we'll see if there's an objection.
Is there, you going to provide me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
But just, you know, it doesn't come up here yet, until you're ready to present it.
I understand that, yes.
If you're going to be ready to present it next time.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, other questions for this witness?
Uh, Ms. Kaminsky, um, Tony Bailey, Conestoga Village, um, in your professional opinion, could a land bridge be built at South Eithin and Lancaster?
Could a land bridge? I'm sorry, do you know?
I think it's beyond the scope of her...
Yeah, that's, that's not part of her testimony. Okay, ask another question, please.
Um, I, I don't, uh, now, you've determined that it's, it's now 24 seconds to cross from, I guess, South Eithin over onto the north side, um, and you've determined that you would utilize 30 seconds?
No. Uh, my testimony is that, right now, that the signal operates with 24 seconds to cross from one side to the other side. And my testimony is further to that, that if we did any improvements to that intersection or retimed it in any way, PennDOT would require us to come out and provide 30 seconds for the pedestrian movement.
Um, is there a reason, uh, for that, you know, not being a traffic engineer?
Sure, sure.
What is it a...
It's a really good reason. Uh, several years ago, we used to use a walking speed of four feet per second, and over time and through, uh, additional analysis, there has been a determination that we need to be using 3.5 feet per second. So the standard has changed, and so now, when we do our calculations, it's based on three and a half seconds rather than four feet per second. So...
Three and a half feet?
Three and a half feet per second, as opposed to four feet per second. It's a slower walking speed.
And, and, and is that in consideration in terms of safety issues, safety factors?
Uh, I'm not, I, I haven't read the studies on it. I just followed what was dictated to me by PennDOT when we were doing the analysis. Um, I do know that previously, uh, if we were in an elementary school area or we knew there were younger children or, uh, aged community, we would typically go down to that three and a half feet per second value, uh, and I'm just, I would be guessing why PennDOT did that, or, uh, and it would be based on possibly taking into consideration the general public rather than segregating and determining if there's elementary-age school students or if there's elderly in the area.
Does it take into consideration, you know, people that might be crossing walkers, wheelchairs, crutches? Because, you know, if you stand at South Eithin and Lancaster, um, you know, athletes cross there, and sometimes they're injured, they, they go across on crutches. So is any of that considered?
No, that's a random event. It's not a typical event that occurs. Uh, we also have an, an additional, uh, I don't know if you heard my testimony earlier, but there's some additional timing that we put in there at the beginning of the cycle.
Right.
And, um, not only that, but Pennsylvania requires vehicles to yield to pedestrians in a crosswalk, so if a person were to step off and not be able to complete that movement, the vehicles would be required to yield to that pedestrian because they would still be in the crosswalk.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other, uh, party, have questions?
I just have three quick ones. Uh, Ms. Kaminsky, uh, you had mentioned, um, with your warrant analysis that a right-turning lane at Eithin Avenue, uh, is warranted.
Yes.
Um, and you have a distance of that lane of 150 feet.
Correct.
Um, if the lane were longer, would that longer lane length translate into more, uh, better performance at the intersection for through traffic?
What you, you may want to, considering that Villanova owns this entire frontage, it may be beneficial to actually bring it back to Church Walk to allow vehicles to move in and then, uh, merge with traffic, so that any right turns coming out of that could merge with the traffic. Uh, sometimes we do that, sometimes we don't. So it could be beneficial, yes.
Okay. And there was some, there was some comment on this turning lane and whether or not this would help with special events. Um, what about not-so-special events? So, for example, this past week in Villanova hosted a buddy walk. I don't know the attendance, but there were only a few officers out there. Actually, there was only one officer out there, and only at one intersection, and I was in traffic for 15 minutes because there were cars trying to turn it. Would, would turning lane help in that instance?
Absolutely. It would.
Okay. And then my last question, can you just, I don't know if this is your, in your domain or not, but can you opine on the rate at which vehicles can enter a parking lot from several entrances versus, say, a parking garage from one entrance? Is there a difference in the rate in which vehicles could get into a parking lot that has several entrances versus a garage that only has one?
Um, I, I believe that the parking garage actually has two, but, um, I, I do, it would be my opinion that it would be a faster rate moving into a surface lot, the wider the entry area. Now, I, I do recall that there was some testimony from, uh, Dr. Chance discussing widening the entrance, opening the gate to allow vehicles to come in. Right now, um, Eithin, those entrances off Eithin are very narrow. I believe that, uh, Dr. Chance said that if this project does not move forward, it would be her recommendation that they widen those driveways because it is so difficult to get in and out of them quickly. So the wider those entrances are, the better it's going to be for getting vehicles to be able to move in more quickly. So it, it's all dependent on, do they need to get a ticket, or are they free-flow in and continuing through the parking garage to circulate?
Okay. Thank you.
Other board questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Um, so I think I understood your, uh, what you presented on the, the, the timing of the, the crosswalk. So essentially, the eastern, the eastern crosswalk dominates, that's the significant variable, so you can add 12 feet to the western one and not affect the timing of the crosswalk.
That's correct. It's the controlling leg.
Right. Um, could, as part of this project, could the, uh, could the eastern crosswalk be made to be more orthogonal than it's currently shown?
I...
And then that would make the two equally significant and improve the pedestrian access, in my opinion?
It could possibly be shortened up by, uh, doing some changes to that intersection operation, meaning that if, uh, you brought us, uh, as you were saying, more orthogonal, uh, that would help, but we also want to make sure that the pedestrian movement is a direct access from the sidewalk that's leading up to it and crossing the street. So that can dictate where your crosswalks are too, because we need to make sure that those curbs...
So it's not accidental that it's skewed the way it's skewed? There's a, somebody made a balance and determined that the 74 feet is better than 64 feet?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Um, if, if you were to have a, um, an added 12-foot lane, uh, going eastbound for the right turn, during those non-special events, what would be the impact on speed? My, my sense is that during, um, so during the non-special events, uh, meaning when traffic is flowing freely, traffic is moving very, very, much too quickly there, in my opinion. It's a dangerous intersection from the perspective of speed. And if you made it 12-foot wider, would you increase that speed, decrease that speed, or have no effect on it?
Do you mean on the right turn lane?
Yes. I mean, essentially, the whole, the whole street gets 12 feet wider, and so my, my concern is that that idea of a wide thoroughfare breeds a mentality of speed. So during the non-special events, my anecdotal observation is that there's already a speeding problem there. I know there's gridlock at other times, but if you're there at 10:30 or, you know, on a Saturday where there isn't activity at, at the, um, at the university, that section of the road is a thoroughfare. And my concern would be making it wider and encouraging people to go faster, which I understand is a accepted concept in traffic engineering and traffic planning.
Um, I, I, I think that, uh, with all the discussions on traffic calming and the fact that this is a 25 mile-per-hour roadway, I know that there's been discussion about widening the road to 12-foot lanes, but it would be my opinion that I think we would be better served by keeping them down to the 10 feet that are out there right now, and I would be willing to support Villanova in that discussion with PennDOT. We're sitting with 25 mile per hour. If we widen those to 12-foot lanes, you're going to get faster speeds, much is what you're saying there. So, uh, and typically, the turning on that corner, um, I'm not sure if, if all right turns out of that right turn lane would go faster than right turns that are interspersed with through movements, because the through movements are going to be moving more quickly, so it might afford a better movement from that area rather than the right turn.
So I guess part of my concern, though, is that the better through movement, i- if there's a trade-off. That becomes, if part of the problem at that intersection, in my opinion, is anecdotal, is that during the non-special events, it's a speedway, and if you increase the throughput at that intersection, you're compounding that problem during the non-special events. That's, that's my concern. Now, so do you see that as a concern or not see it as...
I, I understand what you're saying. Um, I, I don't know what the speeds are out there or the 85th percentile speeds, what, basically, what the motorists are traveling on that road, so I can't, I'm not sure if I could give that opinion on that. I understand what you're saying.
But you can give an opinion that, that generally, if you make, if you have a road that has, during the times at which the road has adequate capacity and the speeds are problematic...
Yes.
If you make that road wider, you are likely to...
You could potentially have higher speeds.
Very good. But potentially or likely? My sense is, if you don't think it would be likely...
No, I don't think I would, I wouldn't say likely.
Very good. So potentially increase the, uh...
Potentially, you could.
The speeding problem?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
There's a lot of other factors that go into that.
Yes. I understand. Thank you. Uh, can you just describe a little bit about the scope of the, uh, traffic adaptive system? Is this a, I mean, it sounds like it's a good idea from everybody's perspective, so is this...
Uh, Mr. Norsini and I have been discussing it for quite a while. Uh, we've submitted on a couple of grants for the township and have thus far not been successful in obtaining funding for something that, or even the research for it. Uh, it's being used pretty extensively in PennDOT's District 6, very successfully, and, uh, I think that, uh, just recently, actually today, I was on PennDOT's website, and one of the critical corridors that PennDOT has identified is Lancaster Avenue, meaning that there are signals on this road that are not operating as efficiently as they could and might benefit from a traffic adaptive system. So they're aware of the problem. It's just a matter of, uh, trying to get some funding and trying to turn these signals into it so that the traffic can move more efficiently along Lancaster Avenue.
Do these projects have a, is that a relatively small scope? Is that an enormous project? Is that...
Um, typically...
Essentially, what I'm getting at is that a...
A financial?
Well, I, I think what, where this goes is you see that as a condition that we might, that we should consider for this, and, and I don't know if, if that's an enormous condition or a, a minimal condition.
Right. Um, typically, we're sitting in about 45,000 or 50,000 per intersection for a traffic adaptive system. Uh, that's been my experience in other municipalities where I've actually done the design for it, and we've constructed them.
And if, do you have to do all seven, or is, if you do two, is it two sevens for the benefit?
It's, it's not beneficial just to do two or three, where you get the most benefit for it, is when you have multiple intersections that are coordinated. Uh, and the reason being is that the system has a brain, in effect, that, that understands how far away a platoon of vehicles are. Platoon, meaning where we have the most vehicles coming in together. So it can determine what's the best way to provide green for the intersection before that platoon arrives, so it can allow those left turns to occur, three or four of them, before that platoon gets there. So it, it distributes the green time in the most efficient manner possible.
And did the, um, did Villanova's engineer disagree with your assessment that the impact, and I'm talking about the four-way stop at Aldwin?
He did dis, I believe that he did disagree.
Disagreed with the assessment that it would impact the, uh, the timing at Route 30 in Eithin?
Correct.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Other board questions? Commissioner Higgins?
Commissioner Fisher was making a point that, um, there, there is, under the current situation, there is backup during special events and even something less than special events at the eastbound traffic on Lancaster, um, wanting to go right onto Eithin. Um, is your opinion that even without this development, we need a right turn lane?
I don't believe, I don't think I ran the analysis based on the existing conditions.
But you did run it based on the numbers Mr. Tavani developed for traffic that would, increases in traffic that would occur as a result of this development.
Correct.
So do you have those numbers? So do you have those numbers offhand? What are they?
Um, I believe it's one of the exhibits. Yes. If you look at T-5, Sheet 1, under volume calculations. Under movement, advancing and opposing, advancing would be the eastbound approach. As it's moving down, it's advancing. Opposing would be the westbound approach at the intersection. So if you look over to volume for rights on the advancing movement, there's 116. And it's showing 0% trucks. And the reason that we look at the trucks is because they are slower moving, so there's a calculation that goes in there to turn them into what we call passenger car equivalents. So for every truck that we have, we anticipate it could be, there's a multiplication for that amount. And so we've got 116 that we're showing for that.
And then what's the, what's the time parameter?
One hour. In one hour, there are 116 right turns at that intersection during the PM peak hour.
And where are you getting the PM peak hour?
Because I know that, but look on the lower right-hand corner, eastbound PM, turn, lane warrant, and length analysis workbook. And if you also look in the design hour under the analysis period, starting at the top where it says study location and analysis information.
Okay.
Come on down to where it says analysis period.
Yep.
Design hour.
Okay.
And intersection control.
So the 116 per hour is what we would expect to see if this development is approved? And that's based on Mr. Tavani's study?
It's based on the information that Mr. Tavani provided in his report. And typically, these analyses are not done until we get into the land development portion and you run through the highway occupancy permitting process with PennDOT.
So that's 116 per hour PM?
During the PM peak hour.
But we're talking about mostly special events, aren't we?
Special events would probably be higher. That would be my opinion.
Because they might be midday.
Yeah, there was no traffic analysis based on the special event. The special event information that was provided by Mr. Tavani was to show what the parking needs were and the movement of traffic around the area, but not specifically at each intersection.
Well, disregarding special events, if, if it's 116 per hour PM?
Correct.
Does that mean that we aren't, only have to worry about that time period for the purposes of deciding whether we need this new lane?
We typically do our analysis based on the peak hours. And so there's an AM peak hour analysis and then there's the PM peak hour analysis. Sometimes if we're in a commercial district, we'll look at a Saturday information for the midday because that could be high. But when we developed the scope with Mr. Tavani and Villanova University, we agreed upon an AM and PM peak hour analysis.
And what's the, what's the AM?
I don't remember.
Okay. At the last session, I asked Mr. Tavani if the university would consider remote parking.
Remote parking?
Yeah. What's your opinion on remote parking as an alternative to the cost of building a, a right turn lane?
Remote, remote parking?
I mean, for special, special events. In other words, instead of having all these cars come up to near Eithen and Lancaster, they would park in a remote location and then be transported by van.
So if the parking facilities that they're proposing were not constructed, is that what we're assuming here or are, is this?
No, the parking facilities would be constructed, but what you're saying is that even with that, we need this right turn lane.
Correct.
And I'm asking whether we could obviate the right turn lane if?
Oh.
The alternative was to bring people in from remote locations during special events?
Well, my first reaction would be that if, if we're going to be constructing this garage and the LAH, the Lancaster Avenue housing development, let's make sure that it's, that we provide the necessary improvements, which in my opinion would be that right turn lane. Because normal and typical intersection operations would require that right turn lane. Now, as far as remote parking goes, that would be something that Villanova would need to be agreeable to. My personal, my personal, as a, as a visitor to campuses, that's required to use remote parking, I don't care for them because it's inconvenient. But it's certainly something that could be out there and offered as an option.
So your answer is that?
Without an incentive disincentive, you're not going to get people to ride those types of systems.
Yeah.
And that incentive disincentive has to, a lot of times hit them in the pocketbook.
Yes. But your answer is that the right, it's a hell or high water thing, the right turn lane is needed.
In my opinion, I would rather see the right turn lane go in here.
Rather, okay.
Correct. As opposed to doing some kind of, I would be concerned that if we did not construct the right turn lane in favor of doing remote bus parking, that what would happen if patrons decided not to use that bus? Because you can't force people to use those, those types of systems. And then you would still have that traffic there and you would still have that congestion and it would be too late to construct that right turn lane.
I understand, thank you.
Okay. I think we're done with this witness. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ball, you have no other witnesses tonight, right?
That's correct.
We're, we're going to come back on the 23rd, so.
Just so the boards aware, I only plan one other witness.
Okay.
And that will be the planner, Mr. Gabriel.
Okay. Mr. Gabriel will be back. And Mr. Canelia, you might have Mr. Tavani back, is that?
I might have Mr. Tavani and I might have the acoustics person. We talked about handing up the report for the acoustics person instead of his testimony, but I don't know if the board may have questions for the acoustics person, so that's.
I'm, I'm agreeable. We're not going to cross on the acoustics because our planner is satisfied with the progress being made, remembering we're only at conditional use. So I'm not going to waste your time on going through that stuff. I would be happy with submission of the reports without presentation of direct and without cross.
Right. Okay. Well, we have the reports, right?
You don't have our reports yet, but?
The acoustic report.
Yes.
It's already been marked. It's in the packet that you, that I handed out tonight. So if the board wants to look at that, I mean, I don't see any problem with bringing, with just submitting that.
Right.
If, if the parties are satisfied with that, so.
And hopefully then, perhaps, oh, go ahead, I'll let you finish, I'm sorry.
So we have Mr. Gabriel, maybe Mr. Tavani, anybody else, Mr. Canelia?
I think that's all.
Okay. And Mr. Yanopoulos, you're going to talk to these two gentlemen and figure out how you want to put that information you have into the record on the 23rd, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
He doesn't need to talk to me, I have no, I think he needs to talk to Nick.
Well, I don't know if anybody's going to have an objection. I think he, Mr. Yanopoulos has accumulated some data and some information that he wants to submit into the record. Is there anything else from any of the other parties?
Are we going to, are we going to need another meeting or we want to finish next meeting?
Sounds like we're going to be done on the 23rd.
Well, I have something else. I need to get, to speak with someone who's responsible for putting together the impact statement because it conflicts directly with testimony that we've gotten and I, my concern is that there's a material in the statement or knowing, someone knowingly made a misstatement. It's directly in opposition to the impact statement. And since we can't bring Villanova University in here to speak, I need to speak with somebody and I'd like to do it on the record about who actually was responsible for the language that's in the impact statement.
Well, Mr. Commissioner Booker, why don't you tell Mr. Canelia now on the record what you want clarified? What are the substantive issues in that report you want clarified and Mr. Canelia then can come back, or between now and the 23rd? Describe how he intends to address it.
Based on testimony from The Economist and the transcripts that were provided of that testimony, The Economist stated he could not comment on the issue for the record as to whether there would be additional revenue based on this development for the township. He said specifically that he had not tackled, tackled that issue on direction of counsel.
I don't recall that at all, Mr. Booker. I recall.
Well, don't, but trust me, it's in, it's in the transcript.
He testified as to?
It's in the transcript, exactly what, and that's on page 104 of the 9, September 10th transcript. The Economist also indicated, as I recall at the time, that he was responsible for the materials that were on these pages from 20 to 30 of the impact statement. The impact statement clearly states that this project is unlikely to generate any net new business or other taxes and further, the proposed development will not generate any ongoing annual tax revenues.
He said ongoing annual tax revenues. He did testify.
That's correct.
He said there would be tax revenues.
Now, the, the question is, who, who wrote that statement? Because the engineer, because the Economist said he specifically was not asked to tackle that question. Consequently, I need to understand who prepared this environmental impact statement.
Go ahead, finish, I'm sorry.
Thank you, let me, let me finish. I need to understand who wrote this statement, who edited the text of the report from The Economist, and is the statement true? And to me, it's very important to have truthful documentation so that I, as an impartial arbiter of this question of whether this development complies with the conditional use ordinance or not, I need to be able to rely on these materials. My concern is that these may not be reliable, so I need to get that information and clarity on that. And Villanova University is not going to give it to me. I need a specific person who would be responsible for this. So that's my question and I need to speak, I need to hear about that.
So, Mr. Canelia, can you address that between now and the 23rd?
I still don't know what he's referring to. I mean, I will look at the transcript, I'll see if there's an inconsistency. If there's an inconsistency, we will clarify it. I believe there is no inconsistency, but if there is one, we will clarify it.
Well, I, I have something from Mr. Booker that has a page in the transcript and the report.
He said page 104.
I will, we'll get, get that to you and then however you want to address it, you can, you will address it.
Okay.
And Mr. Commissioner Booker, if you're not satisfied with that, that goes to your decision.
I understand.
It goes to credibility.
Understood.
That goes to.
So the point here, your, this all began when you asked whether the next meeting on October 23rd would be all we, we would need, we need, not need another meeting. And then you, Mr. Booker, talked about this issue you have. So I think the point is, the next meeting will be it, that we will finish up these hearings then.
I mean, that's either going to be addressed to Commissioner Booker in a satisfaction or not. Mr. Canelia, you'll have to address that, however you want to address that and then, but well, I mean, we're not going to be here, it sounds to me, like three hours next time. Even addressing that and the witnesses we've talked about, it sounds to me like it's a couple hours on the 23rd.
And you also said Bill White was going to testify.
No, Mr. White is not going to testify.
Okay.
He's not going to testify.
How about the residents, the people standing?
The party, the parties can, can request testimony.
Well, the, the parties can put on testimony if they want to, and Mr. Yanopoulos may testify as to what he's done.
They can call witnesses at the next meeting.
They can call witnesses. And if any of those parties want to call witnesses, please tell me between now and October 23rd. It's not public comment, it's just sworn testimony.
Attorney Bowles, why would?
Yes, sir.
Why would we not have Bill White testify? That's not what my understanding was from John Bryce, who's our solicitor.
I spoke with Mr. White today and Mr. Zankowski, and he spoke with Mr. Zankowski. Mr. White believes that the points that he wanted to make that could result in the conditions on a conditional use approval have been made, that the other factors that he is concerned about are land development issues.
Bill White's concerned about land development issues?
Right. The resolution of other factors that would be resolved at land development.
All right, John. John, I have a procedural question then. So will we, will the town?
Well, let's, let's do this. We don't, I think we can go off the record at this point.
Okay, very good.
We're, we're done with the sworn testimony for tonight. But go ahead, Commissioner.
My question was, will the township prepare a summary of the things that, will it be that clear to us? These are the things that we believe are the conditions that should be?
Yes, sir. In fact, that's so.
And we'll have that as input when we make a decision.
Yes, sir. In fact, I, I will be getting, getting that drafted and off to Mr. Canelia before the next hearing for his review prior to the hearing, so we're not fighting that out before you.
Very good, thank you.
Attorney Bowles, why would the finance director be interested in land use, land development issues?
He's not interested in land development. The issues that he's concerned about would be resolved if any, if anywhere at land development. The issues he's concerned about are not issues that are raised under the conditional use ordinance under which this application is made.
Any, anything else for tonight? Any questions from the other parties?
So, based on what we've just discussed, the next is the final meeting.
October 23rd. Tonight will be continued, will continue on October 23rd and, and it looks like we'll finish that night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.